There's any council members who are signed in but haven't turned on your cameras, feel free to do so now. We can establish a quorum. Okay. We're going to get started. Thank you for joining us for the City of Oklahoma City's teleconference, City Council meeting. We have a few announcements to make. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to later today, May 25th, at 1 o'clock PM via teleconference unless we have an opportunity to state a different time. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, public hearing, or to speak under Citizens to be Heard, please call 405-297-2391, or text 405-219-7987, or email cityclerk@OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. After three minutes, the speaker's microphone will be muted. A 30-second reminder will be provided. All participants, please keep your phones on mute until you are recognized to speak, and please press star six when you are recognized. All right, we're going to begin with an invocation from Reverend Valerie Steele of Quell Springs United Methodist Church. And Reverend Steele, I believe I see that you are with us this morning. Thank you for joining us, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I would just like to begin with us remembering today that on this day, we remember the death of George Floyd. It's the first year anniversary of his death. And that we also remember the life lost of the pregnant mother, star shells, of two children, a seven and nine-year-old boy, who were killed in the pursuit of a suspect in a stolen car yesterday. She was killed by the suspect, not Oklahoma City Police. But we want to continue to keep those families in our prayers, and all families of tragic losses in our prayers. Let us pray. God of our faith, we bring before you a most earnest request, a request for the people of Oklahoma, from the synagogues and temples, kingdom halls, mosque, churches and cathedrals, shrines and meeting houses, sacred grounds and sweat lodges, houses of God and sanctuaries. May we recognize from where and who our faith comes, for the only reason we are able, ever able to speak out against the wrong, the injustices, the evil in this world, is because of the very measure of faith you have given each one of us. Help us, we ask, by faith, to speak the all-too unpopular words of life-giving, soul-fearing truth, even when our voices shake. God of hope, we bring before you a most desperate request, a request for the people of Oklahoma, from laughter of children in every park, to the downtown Oklahoma City Scissor Tail Park, for our frontline workers, our policemen, our firemen, our EMTs, healthcare workers, angels and scrubs, who have stood and stand in the gap between COVID-sick loved ones and their families, neighbors checking on other neighbors, ministries that continue feeding persons who are hungry, housing individuals needing shelter, clothing those without covering, and every smile unhidden, and even hidden behind a mask because the window to the soul, our eyes gives it away. May we recognize the slightest sliver of the hope you bring to every moment of our life, even in the times which may seem riddled with despair. For the only reason we have hope is because of your great faithfulness. The sun, moon, and stars are always on schedule, just as constant as our very next breath of air we breathe. Help us, we implore, to be people of boundless, unyielding hope through you for whatever the days ahead may bring. And God of love, we bring before you a most urgent request, a request for all the people of Oklahoma, from the far-reaching cities of Kinton in Miami, down to Hollison, Hayworth, from the northernmost edge of New Kirk all the way to the very southern tip of Marietta, every locale in between the Tall Grass Prairie to the Red River. May we recognize the love you lavish upon every living soul, not sparing any drop or any drip of it. For the only reason we are capable of love is because you loved us first. Help us, we pray, to love you with our total selves and love our neighbor as we love ourselves. From the halls of the schoolhouse, virtual or otherwise, to the halls of the state Capitol and city halls, for our mayor Holt, David Holt, and our council members, fill every void in every place with you, oh God. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Steele. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We'll start with item three, Office of the Mayor, item three A. This is the third meeting where we are considering the repeal of most of our occupational licenses here at the municipal level. We had a full presentation on this two meetings ago. Today is the potential final hearing. I don't know if there's any discussion or questions, but if there isn't, we could take a motion for adoption. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Okay, are they? Councilman Carter, have you had a chance to vote?
It is not allowing me to right now. I'll vote again.
Thank you. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you to everybody and city staff who worked on that, and I think that makes a great statement. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to appointments. We have appointments to Board of Adjustment, Bricktown Urban Design, Downtown Design, Historic Preservation, MAPS for Citizens Advisory Board, MAPS for Investment and Operating Trust, Oklahoma City Housing Authority, Planning Commission, Redevelopment Authority, and Urban Design Commission, items B through K under item three. We could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Are we ready now? Councilman Carter, how do you wish to vote?
I abstain.
I abstain?
I abstain.
We actually can't do that under the charter because you're on the screen. You're present, and so you have to, you have to vote. Okay, all right. If you've turned off your camera, you are no, you have functionally left room, so then we can close the vote. All right, passes unanimously. Okay, now we're moving on to Journal of Council Proceedings, item four. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Prime Go still isn't working. I'm a yay.
Okay. That's Councilman Carter voting high. Passes unanimously. Now we're at item five, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we have several this morning. First, starting on item nine R1, under unsecured structures on page 17, item C, and all the, all of these items that I will list in every category will be stricken from the agenda. Item C, 8401 North I-35 Service Road is re-notify for additional structures. Item D, 2220 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. Item G, 201 Northeast 15th Street, three notify for a new owner. Item Q, 1028 Southwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 201 Southeast 39th Street, the owner has secured. Item W, 1124 Northwest 45th Street, the owner has secured. Item X, 1128 Northwest 45th Street, the owner has removed, on the previous one, I'm sorry, the owner had removed also. On item AB, 813 Southwest 48th Street is to rework as, to rework as dilapidated. Then under item nine S1, abandoned buildings on page 18, all of these are stricken. Item B, 8401 North I-35 Service Road, re-notify for additional structures. Item C, 2220 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. Item N, 1028 Southwest 30th, 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 201 Southeast 39th Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, item Q, 1124 Northwest 45th Street, the owner has removed. Item R, 1128 Northwest 45th Street, the owner has removed. Item T, 813 Southwest 48th Street, to rework as dilapidated. That is all the items that I have.
All right, thank you. That brings us to item six, revocable permits. We have item A, a revocable permit with Dead Center Film for a screening as part of the Dead Center Film Festival on June 12th at near Booker T. Washington Park. I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but Councilwoman Nice, do you want to speak to it or make a motion?
I can. I can speak to it, I guess, in two ways. As a member of the Board of Dead Center, I do know this, this particular film is a film that only Oklahoma City has been able to receive. And for us to show this and preview this at Dead Center at Washington, Booker T. Washington Park, and it's pertaining to the Summer of Soul, so it's a soulful concert from the 19, if I'm not mistaken, late 1960s, early 70s. So if you remember that era, well, I was a twinkle probably in my mom's eye a long time before that. I still remember some of those songs and some of those folks, so I hope you will come out and enjoy, and I believe there will be another film to premiere before that, but we're excited about Dead Center coming to this part of Ward Seven. So with that, I will move for approval. Just waiting for it to come up.
Yeah, I remember it quite vividly, so I think I'll enjoy it.
Well, come on. Bring your chair. We'll have fun.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through P we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCMPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C. See, we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Well, adjourn OCPPA. You'll note that our consolidation of Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust is making progress and is no longer on the agenda today, and so we will reconvene our council meeting on item seven, the Consent Docket. And I believe we have a presentation right up front on item A. We also have presentations on items AH through AL, kind of as a group, AM and AN as a group, presentation on item BM, presentation on item BN. And that's all that we have scheduled. Is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote, or just a little bit of separate discussion? Hearing none, we'll start with the presentation on item A. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have Peter DeLeese with us today. This is for the Festival of the Arts, and this is one that normally would fall under a revocable permit, but because of some of the agreements that we have with Festival of the Arts on this, it was determined by municipal council's office that we needed to have an activity and use agreement, so it's really similar to what we've had before. So Peter, if you'd like to just make a few comments about the event.
I would. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeman. I've got an opportunity here to screen share with you just momentarily. Let's see, it's been disabled. I don't have to. Would you like me to or not? Zach, is that something?
Yeah.
They're working each set up on that.
Okay. I just thought the council might enjoy seeing how we've enlarged the scope of the event.
And Peter, you should be able to now share your screen.
Let's see, this will stop other screen shares. Do you want to continue? Yes. Ah, here we go. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just want to show, this is City Hall right here, and for the first time, we're changing, as you'll remember, we used to have a stage on the west side of City Hall, and the event was closed down just to Walker Street. But with the city's approval, we have opened now Patience Lading Drive, and we have moved the stage that was on the west side of City Hall to the east side of City Hall, and that's going to really open up the event, allowing us to, for this, just this one year, we're going to have food trucks on Patience Lading Drive that surrounds the area here. We're also going to still allow city council parking in this area right here. This will be a loading and unloading area here for the stage, the main stage, which will be on the east steps. On the west side of City Hall, we've enlarged the children's art field to a much, much larger area. It'll cover this whole quadrant here with several tables for kids. The kids' activities will be spread out, only four kids per table to work on children's activities, allowing the kids to not be all clustered in a, in a big mass like they were in previous years. All these decisions were made at the behest of the Health Department in an effort to really sort of spread the event out, give us the opportunity to have good social distancing. On the south side of the west side of City Hall, we now put the Pottery Place in a much larger area under that beautiful tree on the south side there. You see these rectangles represent large tents. Since we've moved the festival to June 22nd through the 27th, obviously, we're in the hottest part of the summer, so we have a lot more canopies that are going to be in place this year. Normally, we would have had a stage down here on Couch and on Call Court. We've removed both of those stages, and we've also changed the food court dramatically. We're taking all the tents out. We have food trucks, six of them on Couch Drive, and six of them over here on Call Court Drive. And the idea here is to spread the food out over the entire three blocks of the event. We've opened a new stage, which is going to be in the center of Bicentennial Park. We'll call that the Green Stage, which incidentally is what it was called back in the old days when festival was here back in the, in the 70s and 80s. So we'll just have two stages, the, the Green Stage and the Main Stage. And the reason for that is really, a lot of the children's acts that we would normally have associated with festival didn't get a chance to perform this year, and so we really had to cut back on some of the acts that we would be normally doing. Oh, stop. Well, let's see, there's one other thing I wanted to show you. We also have a, our, our annual Angels and Friends Party. That will be happening on Saturday, June the 5th this year over at West Village, and that's going to be happening between 7:00 and 10:00 o'clock on, on June, on June the 5th. We want to really thank everyone involved with the process of moving Festival of the Arts, specifically Aubrey McDermott with Assistant City Manager, and Craig Freeman, City Manager, and of course, Mayor Holt. We came to all of you. We also came to Phil May Tubby at the Health Department, really walked through this whole process of, of moving the festival from April to June. You know, the, the preliminary conversation was, well, would we be even having the festival this year? We really appreciate the city's willingness to work with us to, to have this event and to try this new format, which is, you know, really changing the event. And the idea of having food trucks and trailers is really, the first time we've ever done this, we'll go back to the tent scenario. We lost about 10 of our in-town vendors that have restaurants that would normally be in, in tents because they just didn't have access to trucks and trailers, and we certainly want to get those restaurants back next year. But we love the idea of having that stage on the, on the east side of City Hall. We, we look, know this is a one-time offer on Patience Lading Drive closure, and we anticipate that next year, we would like to consider having the stage back on the east side, but we would do that with having Patience Lading Drive open as it was in years past, and just utilize that beautiful lawn on the east side. But those are some of the changes, and we really, really do appreciate this opportunity to come before you and talk about Festival of the Arts. I do, by the way, have on the line with me Seth Lewis, who is our Festival of the Arts Director. Thank you so much, Mayor Holt.
Thank you, Peter. It's so awesome to have you back. We're excited.
Peter, Mark Stonecifer here, a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Peter, can you hear me? Are there co-chairs of the event this year?
Yes, there are. That would be Randy Casmas and Casey Knowlting, and hopefully they'll be coming before you on that Tuesday morning. Boy, I'm sure glad you brought that up, Mark. Tuesday morning, it will be the opening ceremonies at 11:00, and Mayor Holt has kindly said he will come and, and help us welcome in the festival that year, and then after this year, and then after the opening ceremonies, we'll have the official's luncheon. And the official's luncheon normally happens up in the Hall of Mirrors at the Civic Center, and this year, we're not going to do that because we don't want to have that cafeteria-style seating and, and all that, so we'll be giving out food batteries to everyone, all the, the officials who come that morning, and we're inviting everyone on the council to please come to the opening ceremonies. And then we'll just ask everybody to go out and, and get whatever lunch they would like, and hopefully just walk around and enjoy the event. But yes, Randy and Casey will be on stage, and hopefully they'll be, come before you that morning, to, at City Council meeting that morning, to bring you a festival poster and to thank everyone on the council.
Great. One other question, real important question. Since you've moved the event to June, are you promising no rain-out days?
Well, you know what? I think we're going to see some pretty warm weather, and it's, it's usually relatively consistent there, but during that time of year, we'll just have to wait and see. I mean, this has been the mildest spring on, on record for quite some time, so who knows, Mark? We might see snow.
Look forward to the event. Thank you, Peter.
It is worth noting that the, it is worth noting that the original scheduled dates of the Arts Festival were some of the worst weather I've ever seen. If you'd had that event that week, it would have been pretty much a disaster other than maybe one or two days.
I think you texted me the morning it was like 33 degrees.
Any other comments for Peter? Okay. All right. Anything else on this item, Mr. City Manager? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Peter, so much. We're going to move on to some more presentations, and we'll vote on this in a few minutes.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you on the council and the city manager's office. I really, really appreciate all the work you've done to help us make this event happen this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now we have a presentation that's, as a group, on items AH through AL. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. These items are all related to arts, and so Robbie Kinzel and Randy Marks will make presentations on each of the individual items as we go through. I really do appreciate Robbie and Randy. They're very busy these days, as you can see, while almost every single council item has something related to arts, just exciting effects of the 1% for arts, and I appreciate their leadership in working in the community and leading in the community for our arts program. So Robbie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager. So I will be sharing my screen. We'll start with AH. And so, can you see my screen? So, item AH is an amendment to a public art commission agreement with Studio KCA. The principal artists there are Jason Klemoski and Leslie Chang. And they, the, the two artists received their first commission agreement with the city in May of 2019. And through the course of time, several things happen after an artist receives commission agreements, after those are approved by city council, they have to go through structural engineering review with the city engineer, they have to go through downtown design review when located downtown, and all of these things leading up to a permit. The other things, we keep in very close contact with them because we have numerous stages in their contract where they can order materials and then receive payment from the city once they've shown us that they have actually ordered those materials. And the cost of steel is only good for a couple of days. So this is a very important thing to bring up because, as we've seen over the last 14 months, construction costs have increased quite a bit. So when we learned in December 2019 that a work of art very similar to our original commission from Studio KCA was being proposed on an adjacent corner with the Thunder Alley development, we asked the artists not to order the materials yet. We wanted to go to the Arts Commission. Both works of art were proposed at between 28 and 29 feet. They were orbs that were in the air, and it's, it's very much a priority of the Arts Commission that the work commissioned by the city be unique and original to the city's art collection. This is very important for our image internationally and for the public to understand. We, we do one-offs, and they're very site-specific. And so as the Arts Commission looked at all these factors, several ambassadors went and talked to the Thunder team, and it was very evident that the Thunder could not really back, back off of something that was such a universal symbol as a basketball. I mean, that's what their team plays with and will continue to play with. And so the Arts Commission made a recommendation to go ahead and speak with the contracted artists and have the selection committee work with them, and to see if there could be a new concept that would be forwarded, and that's what we bring to you today. The selection committee worked on a, a package of thoughts that they presented to the artists in August of last year, and some of the key themes were aspiration, hope, movement upward, representing our city, and characteristics of tenacity, fortitude, and strength, branding the park as a park for everyone, and conveying inclusivity, a wonderful sense of playfulness, wonderful young energy, and that this was the entry point in a very important work for the city at our 100% corner. Some of the things that also allow Some of the things that also allowed us to make this amendment and move money from contingency was that the original work of art was going to require an extraordinary amount of new construction work, because we had to allow the park to be completed. And I worked very closely with David Todd, our Maps Manager, on this too. He said, "You need to make sure you reserve a large amount of contingency for the work you're going to have to do after the fact to prepare the plaza." And so some of the package of thoughts that we gave the artists included things like, "We want minimal disruption, and we're also going to put the financial responsibility for any disruption for the installation of the piece back in your contract." So this allowed us to move money from contingency. We're not using any additional money that was originally included in the 1%. We're just moving it from contingency into this pot to allow the artists to have that responsibility instead of the city. And so we expect, if approved by council, this work could be completed by the third quarter of 2022. We hope in time for the anniversary of the opening of Scissor Tail Park. And this also translates to 41 weeks from a notice to proceed. And so that is Item AH. Now we'll move on. Our Public Art Project Manager, Randy Marks, will talk about this next one.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager. I'm Randy Marks. The sculpture titled "Nourish" symbolizes an important function, not only of the Belle Isle Library, where it's going to be located, but of course, any library, which is nourishing growing minds of all ages. The image is of a seed that provides the right ingredients for a new plant to spring into being. The eight-foot-tall sculpture features a colorful glass insert with a quote from a poem by poet laureate Joy Harjo, and an aluminum body, which will be powder-coated in a neutral finish, and which will reflect a light show of changing colors. The work will be installed on the south side of the expanded library, where it will be highly visible from both inside and outside the building, including from Villa Northwest Highway, and of course, the new BRT. So we present to you "Nourish" for your consideration.
And our next item, AJ. Often, as stimulated by the city's 1% for art ordinance, the private sector steps up and wants to support the city effort, because they want to demonstrate that they enjoy it as well. So the Mesa Park Neighborhood contacted our office and wanted to remember with Melinda Irwin, a neighborhood resident, honoring late, her, Melinda's late mother, Anita Alice Irwin, who really enjoyed the neighborhood and the park. So Ms. Irwin donated a certain amount of money to be able to commission a work of art for the park. And after looking at several locations, it was determined that the stage at the Mesa Park was a little bit underutilized and could use some updating. And so we decided, because of the way that it was being used, that there would be an opportunity for a really unique backdrop, because the stage often serves as a concert venue, or a place that weddings may happen and other celebrations. And so the Mesa Park Neighborhood then formed a selection committee. And we sent a request for qualifications to the city's pre-qualified artists pool. And as those artists were shortlisted and proposals, the artists that were finalists were paid to produce concepts. And the committee recommended the work entitled "Deep Roots" by Morgan Robinson, and that's what you see here today. This work will also be lit, so at night, it will really increase the amount of light in this park. This particular corner is very poorly lit. And both the Arts Commission and the Parks Commission has seen this concept and recommended it to the City Council. And then also, the city's Historic Preservation Committee has also reviewed this and issued a certificate of appropriateness. The Mesa Park Neighborhood will retain ownership and all of the maintenance responsibility for the work, and they will ensure the work according to law. And they will also be responsible for removal later, when the work has outlived its time in the park. And the agreement on Item 7AJ will allow them to place this in Mesa Park and proceed for a period of 15 years, and that it can be extended by mutual agreement. And then we'll move on to Item 7AK. This is another park installation and maintenance agreement. This time, it's for Carolyn Hill Park, that is just outside of the Oklahoma City Museum of Art. Back in 2012, City Council adopted a resolution to name that portion of the park outside of the museum, Carolyn Hill Park, in honor of the museum's former president and CEO. And so their intent at that time was that later, they would want to exhibit outdoor works from their collection in the park to help promote the museum and their permanent collection. This work here, Folded Circle Split by American artist Fletcher Benton, has been a gift in honor of the museum's 75th anniversary, and has been selected by them as the first work that they would like to place in the park. And I've worked very closely with the Parks Department to put together the Public Art Installation and Maintenance Agreement. And if approved by you today, will allow them to place works in the park according to the city's, the Arts Commission's recommended policies through the year 2036. And then finally, on Council Item 7AI, this is authorizing the acceptance of a major challenge grant from the Oklahoma Humanities for the Services of an Indigenous Scholar and Knowledge Keeper to incorporate Indigenous perspective and histories on the Oklahoma land run. We will be able, we have received word that we've been awarded this grant, and we must ask council if we can accept it to move forward. The scholar that we will work with is Brenda Golden. And I know she's very well thought of in the Native community. And also, the committee has selected Knowledge Keepers Anita Fields and her son Yatika Starfields to work with the group and carry out this project. It should be completed by year end, calendar year end. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Robbie and Randy. Appreciate your input on those items. Can you go ahead and give us the next ones?
Are you all done with?
Yes, we're finished. Yes, sir.
Okay, then that brings.
That brings up AM and AN.
So I've asked Aubrey McDermott, one of our Assistant City Managers, to speak on both of these items. They're actually two separate items. The first item is relating to donations for our Homeless Strategies Coordinator, and Aubrey will talk a little about that. One of the functions of this position will be to administer a contract or the agreement on a Better Way Program. And then, and so we had a question about that program and what it looks like going into next year. And then also on Item AN, this is an agreement with the county with the Shine Program. And Aubrey will also speak to this. Both of those, A Better Way and Shine, will have effects on beautification in the community with just litter pickup. They'll be managed separately. There's separate agreements. But ask Aubrey just to speak about both of these. The first one, again, is initially the donation that we're receiving, two donations that we're receiving, and then the second one is that agreement. So I'll let Aubrey speak to both of these.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So I'm pleased to be bringing this forward. We have been working on how to address homeless, increasing homelessness issues in Oklahoma City for many years. Back in 2019, Mayor Holt established a task force to address the growing homelessness issue in Oklahoma City. This task force was about two dozen different people from all the different types of service providers, nonprofits, and film-profit groups. It was chaired by Innismuch Foundation's Bob Ross and Arnaud Foundation's Sue Ann Arnaud. This group worked diligently to create a plan to address homelessness in Oklahoma City by working with a consultant that performed many interviews with stakeholders, user groups, did research, studied Oklahoma City's core issues that might lead to the increase in homelessness, and come up with many strategies to address things like, what are the gaps right now? What are the needs? What groups are out there with funding resources that might be able to step up and answer those questions that are in play? We have many different organizations that work to support getting people off the street and into housing and into jobs. But they all have pretty specific and individual roles. So I think one of the best things that came out of the homelessness task force process was that these groups sat down, rolled their sleeves up, and learned how to better coordinate and work together towards common goals. We knew in 2019 that once we developed this strategy for the homelessness plan, that we really needed to have somebody that could oversee the coordination of all the different recommendations that came out of that plan. So we have a draft plan that's going to be coming forward this summer for public review and comment and coming to City Council. And the plan involves about eight categories with multiple strategies per category. Each one of these strategies might involve different agencies and groups, might need kind of a unique approach to being able to tackle it, various funding sources to be able to put actions in place. And so having a position established to oversee that coordination with all the different groups and keep the momentum going is very critical to making sure that we achieve success towards tackling the issue of homelessness in Oklahoma City. So the Arnaud Foundation and the Innismuch Foundation wanted to support the efforts of the city establishing this position. And they have each offered $30,000 to get that position started. So this basically shares the cost three ways in the first year of establishing the homelessness coordinator position. This person that we are going to be hiring, it's a very critical role. It's a key position for the city. They will be working with our two other homelessness services staff members in the Planning Department. This position is going to need to be a dynamic, well-organized, well-connected person who has relationships in the community. So far, we know that there are many qualified people that are out there. So we're very hopeful that we'll hit the ground running with somebody great in the next couple of months. This will be housed in the Planning Department, so that we'll make sure that we have efficiencies with groups working together. So that's the gist of it, and I really want to express my great appreciation, because the Arnaud Foundation and Innismuch Foundation have stepped up so many times to help us. They've helped fund the plan, the homelessness strategies plan, and the consultant. They're very hardworking, coming to every meeting, helping us pull resources around the table, and then again, contributing to helping us establish this position. So does anybody have any questions about this position or what they may be doing? Okay, and I wanted to talk briefly about A Better Way, because the homelessness plan and strategy plan, this is an example of an initiative that comes out of the plan. The A Better Way Program is a program that was kind of the brainchild of Mayor of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Several years ago, he had noted that there were a growing number of people that were panhandling, and the homeless population was increasing. He felt like there was a better way to provide resources to help people that needed a handout, and to give the handout a hand up. And so the A Better Way Program uses resources, mental health services resources and employment resources, to go out and offer people that were panhandling to make ends meet and a job for the day. And the job for the day would be doing kind of community service-type things, beautification, litter control, and cleanup. They get paid for working that day, but at the same time, they would get a meal, and they would be introduced to someone who could help them figure out what the barriers were for them to find employment, get into housing, get mental health services. So those case workers that make contact with people really do stick with them after the program. And they saw a lot of people moving out off the streets and into jobs and into housing. So this program's been replicated many times in many cities around the country. And two years ago, the city of Tulsa started an A Better Way Program in partnership with Mental Health Association Oklahoma. So in the midst of the last two years, you know, we've had a pandemic, and that program saw some changes with not being able to put people in a van and take them out and work crews. But even with that going on, they were able to see a very good return on the number of participants that ended up getting into housing, staying in housing, and finding jobs. So the city of Oklahoma City's been watching this program, working with the different partner groups, and is gearing up and starting a program this summer for A Better Way. This position that we would be hiring would oversee that program, which is going to require partnerships, different types of donations over time to support the program. They can help grow the program. Initially, it'll be a three-day-a-week program. The city of Tulsa's ready to expand theirs beyond three days a week at this point, because there's enough demand and need and good that's being done through it. So we're really proud to have a position that can oversee a project like this, in addition to a lot of the other things that'll come out of the homelessness strategies document. So did anybody have any questions about where we're going with A Better Way? Okay. Mayor, do you want to take a vote on the donations first, and then we'll move on to the next item?
No, we do it all as a group, as the consent pocket. So no, you can just keep.
That's right. Forgot we were on consent. So let me talk about the Shine Agreement. Okay. Item AN on your agenda is an agreement between Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City, so that Oklahoma City can use a program called Shine, which was established by Commissioner Brian Mon, who's on the call today. Shine stands for Start Helping Impacted Neighborhoods Everywhere. And this program uses crews of nonviolent offenders that have been sentenced to community service and volunteers to provide labor to help beautify public areas. So the city has a need to provide cleanup and beautification services. We see that Oklahoma winds blow litter, trash, and debris along our roadways. It tends to collect in certain areas and drainage ditches. So years ago, we've utilized Shine for many years. But what we'd like to do this time is we'd like to contract with Shine crews to work three days a week. And they would be working along identified corridors that the city identifies and hotspot areas of the city where we know that trash and debris tend to collect. So this way, we have a consistent presence in Oklahoma City that is trying to keep our community clean and beautiful. This agreement also allows the city to call upon Shine to respond to special requests that are needed. Sometimes, you know, there are areas where public roadways or public areas have kind of an influx of trash and debris that aren't on a standard roadway or route. So we can call upon Shine to go out to those areas as needed. The contract also allows us to call upon Shine if we need assistance with removing graffiti. So I want to highlight one thing is that Shine is only allowed to perform work on the public property for Oklahoma City for the trash and debris removal. But graffiti is handled under a different part of the law, which allows us to go on to private property with special permission and special approvals. So if that's something that we need assistance with, the Shine crews know the process and the permissions that they need to get through to help abate graffiti on private property. So our total agreement amount is for $111,000. That includes the base litter control services and then that extra sub-allocation, so that we can have the on-request services as needed. The term of the contract is one year. It allows us the option to renew up to four additional years. And the contract will be administered in the Planning Department, because as Craig mentioned, we have a couple of different programs providing similar services with A Better Way doing beautification and litter control, and the Shine Program being able to help us with that. So we want to make sure that both contracts are administered with staff coordinating where these crews are going to be going and what work they're doing, so that there's efficiency and no overlap between those different programs. And with that, you know, Commissioner Mon is on the call, and either one of us can answer any questions you have.
I guess I just have one question. As we're looking at the possibilities of this program, and also currently, some of the concerns we've already had with residents in the community and in the city pertaining to cleaning up homeless camps, is that going to be part of this contract?
So the homeless camp situation is routed through the homeless outreach team and the police department. They are the ones who coordinate with different service providers to go out and make contact with people who may be camping to let them.
coordinate with different service providers to go out and make contact with people who may be camping to let them know that, you know, they can't stay in those places and try to connect them with different services. The process for the homeless outreach team is a little different process in that the police department has its own contract with a company that they can call upon to go in after people have moved out of camps. If there's any large bulky debris left, sometimes there's biohazards remaining in those camps and that contract is with a specialized crew that's certified to do that type of work. If there is a campground and it's on a public site and it does not contain the biohazard, we could, under this contract with Shine, ask Shine crews to go out and clean up that site afterward. I don't know how often that would happen, but we do have a process in place to coordinate the homeless outreach and the camp cleanup outside of this.
Thank you.
Mark Stonecifer, just wanted to thank you for being here today and for all the great work and time you spend with the Shine program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to echo Mark's words, I know Shine has helped us out a lot in different areas and Brian would certainly be appreciative.
Commissioner, would you, it's not often we get a grace by the presence of the county commissioner. Would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted, if this is the appropriate time to say thank you for considering this item. We've appreciated your support in the past and have had a great collaboration. We get called, I might just add that we often get called by property owners and neighborhood associations who work on general cleanups and they put stuff on the easement where it's legal for us to haul off. And and so sometimes we get to work directly with different council members. So if there's anybody who has a project in your ward or mayor, you just anywhere in the city that you'd like us to address, we're always happy to take your calls and to work. And sometimes that means strategy sessions on getting with the local stakeholders to decide how to navigate that. So always happy to help. And Oklahoma County has provided two thirds of this cost of the program. And what this is to do is to kind of round out the other third. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for all you do.
I have a few items with related to this, to these items. I have a few items related to these items.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, and let me know if my internet is is acting janky again. First, I want to say just major sincere thank you to the Innis much foundation and the Arnold Foundation. Serving on your homelessness task force, Mayor. You know, it's put me in a lot of situations where I've gotten to know those individuals very well and I'm just very impressed by their dedication to solving some very complex decades long issues in the making. So I just really want to take a moment to say publicly again to them, thank you. And then of course, thank you to Commissioner Mon for the work with Shine and then I have a a bit of a request and I I'm not really sure the timing of this request, but I know a series of further recommendations are heading our way when it comes to homelessness. I think my question concern here is, you know, Ward Two, our office, whenever someone reaches out to us, when a resident reaches out to us about someone experiencing homelessness and they see them, you know, maybe it's panhandling or maybe it's an encampment, whatever. We've gotten, you know, pretty good at making sure that we reach out, not just to the homeless outreach team, but also homeless alliance and the Mental Health Association of America's pilot program for their street outreach team. And so what I'm wondering is before those recommendations make their way to us and as these items here find their way into existence, what can we do to make sure that our residents know that the street outreach team and homeless alliance and HOT are all, you know, options here that, because I think that too often there's still this idea that someone experiencing poverty is a criminal or if someone has experienced crime in their neighborhood. And then there's a homeless person. It's easy for people to go, oh, it's the homeless person who did it. So I still think there's a stigma here of homelessness and and poverty and a criminalizing of of people experiencing homelessness. So police become the 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 solution, which is why I'm such a fan of what homeless outreach team, you know, the work that they are doing. But I really think that we have an opportunity here to, as we're doing this cleanup, this such necessary beautification work that we're also making sure that we are doing everything we can as we roll out these items to also promote using homeless alliances services and the Mental Health Association's street outreach team to, as you were saying, Assistant City Manager McDermott, connect folk to services. So what what could that look like? And again, I know that some of what I just suggested is going to eventually be part of some of the recommendations heading our way, but I feel like there's an interim space between then and now.
Well, if I might respond first, that it really is our process that we go through right now. And you're right, when we get messages from members of the community about concerns of people camping or or, you know, any other concerns regarding homeless, we connect the right resources to go out and intervene on behalf of of getting people into safe conditions and housing. So our homelessness services division in the planning department and the homeless outreach team in the police department and our partners in homeless alliance and mental health coordinate who's going to go out, when and where and how to to address issues around the city. And in our preparation and conversation with Commissioner Mon with the Shine program, I know that Oklahoma County also receives complaints about different things. What we have expressed to Commissioner Mon is please work with us to let us know if there's anything we can do to help send our resources out because they can respond to requests for cleanup. But when we go through these processes with outreach, we want to be able to approach people first and we are absolutely going to work as partners in this program and in this process together between Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City. So really, it's it's as as emails come in through the city council office or directly to the city manager's office, we try to respond to each one to let people know that we do have a system for going out and addressing things. We're really trying to help people move out of the situation rather than just move them from one location to another and intervene with some resources and some help. And our our homeless outreach team and our service providers really do get to know people on a personal level and try to figure out what specific things they need to do to help them. They're really not about just saying you can't be here. You have to go find some other place. So does that answer your question, Councilman Cooper?
Yeah. Yes, it does. I mean, I I hear what you're saying. I just know that there was recently a site that was cleared. And when I had reached out to Dan Strawn, he said they had not been contacted at homeless alliance and that was something he told via email he said to me. So I I just want to, I don't want there to be moments where that happens. And I know that yeah, that's all I that's all I'm saying because I want to make sure that your description of how this should, this this should work is how it works.
Right. With our contract coming online too with Shine and because of the relationships we're forming, we do have new people involved in in these processes and we're getting groups together to talk about what resources are available and how we can coordinate together. So Commissioner Mon and I have been discussing that and moving forward, I think we're going to have, you know, a good coordinated effort in outreach and cleanup in the right sequence.
That's wonderful to hear. And I can tell you, Commissioner, soon after I took office, we had a resident reach out from one of our neighborhoods and, you know, they were very thankful, this is about two years ago, very thankful for you all coming out there, helping to clean up what what had become, you know, actually a literal fire hazard. It had their areas had caught fire and that resident was beyond thankful for for the work you all did that day. So and I don't know if I've had a chance to thank you for that in the last two years because a lot's happened. So. Yeah, okay. And then finally, Aubrey, excuse me, Assistant City Manager McDermott. How can we as council members help promote the job opportunity that you're describing? And once we start rolling out the the better way, which I just think is a wonderful thing. I I know you've been a champion of it. I know Councilwoman Hammond brought it to my attention, I think about a year or two ago. What can we be doing to promote this? When does that promotion start?
Yeah, we'll be coming forward in the next couple of months for the Contract with Mental Health Association of Oklahoma. We'd also like to do kind of a public rollout of the program to let people know that this is a legitimate program and they can expect to see be a better way van around in the community and workers doing beautification. One of the kind of the the models of the program is to get companies that would be willing to receive new employees to volunteer as employment sponsors. So if you know of any companies who'd like to participate to get employees through the A Better Way program, we would love to know who they are so we can channel people to them. And and we're also going to be looking for people who might want to sponsor the lunches for people as they're out to work. And and these are just kind of ongoing components of the program. I think there'll be plenty of opportunities for you to plug people into a better way as we get it set up and move on and we'll put information out through our public information department about how people can donate resources and funding to the program.
Thank you. Yeah, especially if you can share with us as the time becomes necessary, the, I'm just making a note about the the lunches and the or the opportunities for restaurants and service providers to do that. And then for the employment opportunities as things start rolling out, if we can get that so that we can just forward that, like, I can probably on Instagram and stuff, tag the the districts, for instance, within Ward Two and make sure that they know what's out there. So yeah, that's really cool. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on items AM and AN? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Commissioner Mon, we wrote on all, you you well understand the the parliamentary procedure. We'll vote on this as a group here in a few minutes. You're welcome to stay or not. But thank you so much for joining us this morning. Again, thanks for all you do with Shine. Okay, we're going to go to BM.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a memorandum of understanding with OU Medicine, Inc. and the city. We talked with the council about this and referenced this previously, the legislature this year was looking at a sales tax exemption for the university hospitals trust and the related entities. And that was approved by the legislature and assigned by the governor several weeks back. In the in the interim, we've had conversations and we were doing what we could to influence this because what happened was is the 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 legislature provided a sales tax exemption and anytime they provide a sales tax exemption, it affects the state's sales tax, but also affects the city's sales tax. So any exemption that's granted for state state sales tax will will be passed on to affect the cities as well, cities and counties. And and so this SB 79 was approved several weeks ago. And we had talked with the legislature, we were trying to do what we could to try to offset this because we knew it would have an impact. The estimated annual impact for the city is between five and six million dollars a year and that would be going forward. We've had a lot of concern with that. The proposal for the sales tax exemption by OU Medicine, Inc. was for them to be able to 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 train more doctors and nurses and nurse practitioners. And so it's a noble cause. It's a really good purpose. But our concern was that it's an effect on the city. And so in that process, the legislature asked us to sit down together and see if we couldn't work out a compromise where the exemption would still be granted. But some provision financially could be allowed for the city to be able to help navigate over the next several years as it starts to affect us. And it wouldn't be a permanent solution, but something that could help us get through this as it started to have an impact. The sales tax exemption is set to take place July one or start the effective July one of 2022. So it's next year, about a year from now. So this coming fiscal year, it will not affect, but the next fiscal year it will. We sat down with OU Medicine, Inc. with their team and had conversations and negotiated an agreement where they would make a payment in lieu of taxes. This payment in lieu of taxes will start in the first year that it's effective. So it'll be in our fiscal year 23. And in that year, they will provide us a payment in lieu of taxes of $5 million in that first year to offset that estimated impact. And they'll provide those in monthly payments. And we've worked out the details of how that process will work. It will be then a declining payment for every year over a five year period. So five million in the first year, four million in the second year and the final year, which I think is a fiscal 27, will be it will be a $1 billion payment. So it'll decline by $1 million each year. So it's a total of $15 million over a five year period. It still will have an effect on us and I'm concerned with the effect it will have on our services. When we were at the legislature and talking with them, it was very clear that this was not going to, this is going to be something that was going to pass. It's to provide training for more medical professionals that would be within the city, but also out in rural areas and areas throughout the state. And so it's something again that is a good cause. We just had the concerns because it affected our revenues the way that it did. This will help us have a way that it slowly declines over the five years. But ultimately, it will be an effect on us and our operations, but would help us better to manage that with a slow decline rather than just immediately losing all that sales tax. So that's what is included in this agreement. We appreciate working with OU Medicine, Inc. and their team to get this negotiated and get this in place. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I don't necessarily have any questions. I I do want us to also realize the impact of where this sits and the decline of technically how it's going to to gut this community of those sales tax. I I get five years, five million in decline to 15 million all overall, but this is a devastating blow for this particular area of our community because that is the the main place of sales tax revenue for OU Health Science Center and where it is located and how it got there. So I think it's very important for us to to realize the historical preference and in reference of of how this this came to be. And I would only hope that if we're committing to bringing in more physicians, doctors that the practice to things that they are committed to continuing or beginning the effort, should I say, of connecting to the community that that's around it. And also looking at the diversity, equity and inclusion of nurses, physicians, all of those entities that are a part of this hospital program and all of the things that they do in order for us to really trust the process as far as the folks who are truly going to be impacted. And not just our city, because it is a devastating blow to our city, but I want to continue to say how this is a mighty blow to this particular area of our community. So I know that there has to be more talks and more conversations. So a city manager, if there are ways for us to be a part of those conversations to ensure that the community around this area knows and understands what is taking place, I would love for us to work through that.
I I'd also like to echo Councilwoman Nice's kind of historical perspective here. You know, anyone watching at home or following along, I would encourage them to read Boomtown, as I always do, but also Color of Law, which describes, you know, how interstate and unfortunately, while there is incredible work that happens in the medical community specifically as it relates to the east side of our city, the history of how that came to exist where it did is is not a pretty one. And I I so there is already that impact to the community and the neighborhoods there. And now this sales tax impact. And so I would also like to And so I would also like to be involved in any conversations that can help figure out how we can make the best out of the situation, especially as Councilwoman Nice was describing the nurses and physician aspect of this, the pandemic, as we've discussed all last year or for the past year, excuse me. We we know the health outcome disparity as it exists for too many residents who are black and brown. We and and that's just not, I'm not making that up. That that is, it is what it is. And so I wonder how from this sales tax moment, we might not be able to, you know, maybe get a commitment to how do we bring people into the medical profession who are gonna be able to go serve communities that look like them. And we just know from all the research out there that that matters, whether it's in mental health or physical health. And we already know a lot of the infant mortality numbers in terms of the disparities, particularly as it relates to our black community. And that's a nationwide conversation. So I think I'm joining the legislative committee for our city. So I I'm open. I really would like to be educated on how we can collaborate with OU Medicine to, again, if the goal is to get more physicians and nursing nurses, then let's do that because that's how we're going to be able to make this right for those neighborhoods surrounding OU Medicine. So I I think, yeah, until until Nikki said that, until Councilwoman I said that, I hadn't really thought about that being an opportunity here. And then I also just want to say thank you to 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 City Manager Freeman. And I believe Mayor Holt was also involved in some of these conversations with the legislature. I really do appreciate you all putting up that fight. That that was, I I mean, I'm serious, like, really, thank you for that. But I, not but, and I think the fight continues, and I really want to see what we can do. If, again, the stated goal from OU Medicine was to address the physician and nursing shortage, then let's let's address that. Let's get there so that we can really serve a community and part of town that has for decades really been left behind. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. And and thank you both of you. We will reach out to OU to see if we can have some of those conversations to get that initiated. This agreement will establish that payment in lieu of taxes. There's also legislation that is, I know it's been passed by the House, and I'm not sure what its status is right now. It's like a trailer bill with SB seventy-nine that is requiring, it's setting standards, your performance standards or expectations for the numbers of doctors and nurses and nurse practitioners. And I think PAs as well, that they're going to set some expectations on that 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 is at the legislature now that's in the process. But we'll talk with them about, you know, what communication we can have regarding, you know, information of what they do with their diversity, equity, and inclusion, but also what they do at reaching out to the community.
Okay, and item BN.
Yes, sir. Kenny Sudle, one of our Assistant City Managers, has been really trying to, he's been working to lead the way on a lot of what we've had with various grants and programs that have come our way with the Recovery Act, with CARES funds, with what we're working on now, are going to be working on with the Rescue Plan. This this item is the agreement or allows for us to do the application for the funding that's provided for rental assistance. It's outside of our Rescue Plan funding. So Kenny, I'm just gonna let you just speak to this real quickly and kind of where we are in the process.
Yeah, this is really, Kenny Sudle, Assistant City Manager, this is really just a this resolution is really just ratifying, Mayor Holt had to sign a couple of documents. So this is really just a housekeeping issue. When these programs come out, what happens is Treasury, the Treasury Department says, hey, they don't really give you notice. So, for example, emergency rental assistance is one of those things. There was another round of that, and and they put out a document and said, hey, on Friday, the document's out. If you want your money, you got to fill this out and turn it in by Monday. So Mayor Holt was gracious enough to process those things over the weekend. This was back earlier in May. So this is really just a housekeeping item approving those documents that he had to sign for a second round of emergency rental assistance and also for the state and local fiscal recovery funds. But I want to take just a minute to kind of explain those things and talk about where we're at on this. So just just backing up, you know, President Biden signed back in March, the American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one. And so just for everyone out there listening, wanted to kind of clarify that the American Rescue Plan had many different programs embedded within it. The National League of Cities website has a great summary of all those programs. I I counted them this morning. I think there's over ninety different programs that that funded. Some of these will be run by the states, some by federal agencies, some by cities and counties. And and so this document before you today really just approved filling out the information for two of those programs. So one of those was the emergency rental assistance. If if you will recall, between the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, the city received nineteen point six million of funds to go towards emergency rental assistance and utility assistance for those who are at eighty percent AMI or below. This, the the American Rescue Plan added a second round. So there was a fifteen point five million dollar allocation that the city received. And that's something that was what you're ratifying today is the document that the mayor had to fill out for us to officially receive those funds. The other one that you probably have heard much more about is this hundred and twenty-two point five million dollars that the city is receiving. And that is the what's known as the state and local fiscal recovery funds. And I'm happy to report to you that we did receive half of those funds. Under the law, we were supposed to get half of the funds sixty days from when Biden signed it into law, and then we'll get the other half of those funds one year from now. And so just looking at, looking at that, just the state and local fiscal recovery funds, yes, OKC got a hundred and twenty-two point five million, but also the county is getting about a hundred and fifty-four point eight million. The state is getting one point eight billion. So lots of money out there. And I just wanted to kind of point out to you that this, while this is just an administrative procedure we're doing to fill out the Treasury forms to receive these dollars, there's a a big process beginning and underway. So, one, we're analyzing, obviously, the documents and the guidance and the rules, trying to figure out exactly how we can spend these funds. But, two, I do want to let everyone know, we're also starting to have conversations with state, with county, with some of our local cities around us, trying to make sure we figure out what all programs are out there, what people are doing with these dollars, and trying to coordinate some of those efforts. Doug Dowler and Angela Pierce, our two Assistant Finance Directors, are helping coordinate, you know, some of these meetings. We're going to start having meetings just to try to make sure we're all communicating and and try not to duplicate efforts. We'll be reaching out to you all, having conversations as well, trying to see the things that you're interested in. I know some of you have already been sending me ideas and and information, and I've been logging those. But I just wanted to let everyone know, I, we anticipate this would be a similar process to what we did with the CARES Act. As you recall, once we analyzed, kind of figured that out, we we brought back to you all a plan, and you all adopted the plan. And I do want to point out that we amended the plan about six times. And so, you know, I anticipate this is something that will be ongoing. We have a lot longer runway on this, although it's not that long. This, under the state and local fiscal recovery funds, that's the hundred and twenty-two million. Those funds have to be spent by December of twenty twenty-four. So we have, you know, about two and a half years, whereas last time we had like seven months. So just kind of wanted to give you a little preview, a little bit more information about that. There's a lot of of things. We're still not only trying to analyze this program. So so, for example, just the rules on the state and local fiscal recovery funds are a hundred and fifty-one pages. So we're analyzing that right now. There's a lot of other things I mentioned. That that's one of the over ninety programs that that the American Recovery Act or American Rescue Plan funded. And so there's a lot of things. I know schools are getting money. I know there's there's lots of money in there for testing and tracing and vaccinations and research. There's lots of business assistance. There's lots of individual assistance. So we're, we really have a big job ahead of us trying to analyze all this and figure out, you know, what are some of the holes there that that we might be able to fill with these funds? So with that, just wanted to be happy to answer any questions, but just want to kind of point out today is is not allocating these funds or spending these funds or doing anything. This was just purely ratifying the mayor's actions of filling out the the two sets of forms to get these two different programs' fundings amounts to the city.
Mark Stonesifer here. How are you today?
Doing great.
You mentioned that with the American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one, there were more than fifty different programs and that a good source to go look at those programs would be the the National League of Cities outlines, those ninety programs. With regards to the one hundred and twenty-two point five million and the state, as to the state and local fiscal recovery funds, can you, can you tell the viewers, can you tell the council, good sources to start going to look at that, how we can spend it? I I understand now the deadline's December twenty twenty-four, but what are the different programs that will be available?
Yeah, so the the US Treasury's website has a very nice summary of a lot of these programs. You can go find the actual hundred and fifty-page set of rules. There's also a couple of summaries on there that try to, that attempt to summarize that. I would just caution you that the devil's in the details as we've looked at the 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 summaries and you start digging in the actual rules. Sometimes you find things that, oh, I thought I could do this, or I thought I couldn't do this. But generally, how, there's, there's four categories of how cities can spend these funds. It's to support public health expenditures or address negative economic impacts that were caused by this emergency. So that's kind of the first category. And that's going to generally be getting into things like, you know, COVID mitigation and and, you know, medical expenses and things like that, but also addressing business and individual economic impacts that were caused by this. It can be used to provide government services to the extent that you, that revenue was lost during this time period. And there's a very extensive formula that that's listed, how we have to determine, you know, what our potential revenue losses were. And then we can look at that in terms of potentially adding services. It can be used to provide premium pay for some essential workers. And it can also be used to invest in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So those are the four broad categories. Within each of those, there is an ocean of information in that rule that that sort of lays some things out. There are some potential other capital investments that you can make under some some of those other categories that were not specifically listed as water, sewer, and broadband. So part of what's defined as city services could be some capital improvements and investments. So, you know, my hope is what we're trying to do is is analyze this and 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 we really will try to get some more summarized information to provide to you all so that you have a better idea of what sorts of programs could be funded through this. And, you know, last time, I believe, we we met with you all individually and just, you know, got your thoughts on it. It's it's our intent to probably do that again.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but what I thought I heard you say was the hundred and fifty-one pages of materials applied to the American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one. Am I wrong on that?
It it, that was just for the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is one of the programs in the American Rescue Plan. Each one of those has a whole set of information.
What you're telling me is the hundred and fifty-one pages applies to the hundred and twenty-two point five million that we have spent over through the next couple of years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm I'm afraid to ask this question, but I'm going to. Can you send me the hundred and fifty-one pages?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble hearing you right now. I think he's wanting me to send you the the hundred and fifty-one page document. I'd be happy to do so.
Good, please. I sure would appreciate it. Thank you, Kenny.
All right. Any other comments or questions on item BN?
Yes, a couple comments. Thank you, Mayor. First comment, Assistant City Manager Sudle. Thank you for your, I don't even know, baptism by fire, what you've learned and the work you've done over the last year. I've said it to you before. I'll say it again. I am very, I'm very proud of the work you've done over the last year in coordinating the CARES funding. Second is a question. You mentioned there would be a moment where council members, you you all would be connecting with us as it relates to what you've learned in regards to where these funds, where we can expend them. Did I hear that right? And so that's just, there'll be a moment where you all just reach out to us individually?
Yes, I'm I'm still working on a timeline for that, but that's that's by intense that we reach out to you all I believe, like we did last time with the CARES Act, to make sure that, you know, we share with you some of our thoughts, get your thoughts, and also share with you, you know, what some of the possibilities are under this.
Because I already, I've been doing a little bit of my own homework on this, and I've I've seen some language that really stands out to me, like prioritizing, like, first mile, last mile connectivity as it relates to transit and walkability. As you all know, those are some of my favorite words. I've also seen some stuff about sustainability and rain gardens, also some of my favorite words, and stormwater runoff, trying to prevent, you know, mitigate that. So, again, I I love infrastructure conversations almost as much as I love movies. So I'm very excited to sit down and hear what you've learned and how we can kind of work together on that. And then the other ones are more just comments. One, and this 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 item reminds me of the previous discussion we just had with about OU Medicine. And I will just point out to everybody, I know everyone on this council already knows, and I'm sure staff, of course, knows as well, but we are just one of the few states that restricts its municipalities to sales tax as its primary revenue source. And we just saw how devastating what that OU Medicine decision is going to be. And then we see what happens when a pandemic or some sort of external, nothing of our staff's doing, our city leadership's doing, but an external act of God, right? And it 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 went after our ability to collect sales tax revenue. Now, again, thank goodness, you know, it didn't decline the way we were all super worried it was going to. But I just want to point out that that is the consequence of when a when a state legislature restricts municipalities to depend largely on sales tax revenue. I I that is, that is always something that's going to be a thorn in my side, particularly because I'm such an infrastructure nerd, and I hear so much from our residents about the need for further improvements. And I'm so proud of the investments we are making through Better Street, Safer City, and Maps4. I would just say to anybody who wants to see even more that this really could be something if they God bless them, really try and get the state legislature across the state to understand that our municipalities deserve better than restricting us to sales tax revenue as our primary source. And it's also a very repressive tax, right? It it affects people who are working class, working middle class, and middle class more strongly than it does people who are upper middle and upper class. When we buy groceries, that sales tax hits us harder. And there's just all kinds of evidence out there about that. So, like I said, thorn in my side, and this issue just kind of brought that back to my mind. And then my final comment is to say a sincere thank you to municipal council and to any council member who last, this time, like almost this week last year, joined me in crafting the resolution that we passed requesting that Congress's next COVID relief package include precisely this sort of revenue, revenue to make up for lost sales tax revenue for our municipalities and our state government. I really want to thank Amanda and Kenny for helping me craft that resolution. I want to thank every council member who joined me in the City Manager's Office, who I want to thank every council member who joined me and the city manager's office who helped kind of, I didn't know a lot about, I was one of, I think it's my first resolution. I just really want to thank you all and a thank you to, to council staff Boyd Fulton, because he has been teaching me over the last two years that is as much as I want something to happen right now in a moment, sometimes you plant a seed and it bears fruit later. And I wanted that revenue last May and we planted that seed. Mayor Holt advocated the way that he did with mayors all across this country. And I want to say thank you to him again for all of that work. And now it's bearing fruit and I, I just, I'm just very, very thankful for anybody who supported that resolution last year. And again, thank you, Mayor, for the advocacy that you did across this country to, to get this. Because we need it. Our people need it. So thank you. And thank you again, Kenny. I'm ending with that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Well, if that concludes the comments on item BN, that also concludes the items on the consent docket. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, because we have a lot of stuff on this consent docket. It took me a couple of pages to flip through. So I had a couple of questions, item BB as well as item CF and CJ.
Well, let's start at BB.
Yes, I was trying to see what those, what the improvements were going to be with, with particular parks, but I couldn't seem to find it in the information that was posted as far as this particular item. So I'm just kind of curious what we are looking forward to for park improvements.
Councilwoman, this is Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. I can respond to your question.
Thank you.
On item BB, amendment number two to the Contract for Architectural Services is really only for one of the parks that's included in this list. The overall project included 11 parks, but the amendment is specifically for the Pat Murphy Park. It's to actually look at two additional pedestrian bridges that are needed in that park. And so this is the cost for additional construction administration so that the architect and the engineer can spend the time in the field to make sure that they're constructed properly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. And then was it CF? F is in Frank?
Yes, that's correct. I was just kind of curious. I see applying for this reimbursement grant, but I was just, this is new as far as something for me to see. So I was just kind of curious how, how this works and what we expect to gain as far as after this work is done.
Doug, are you on the cover?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
So Councilman Nice was asking about the item, just an explanation on CF, the reimbursement grant from the Department of Agriculture.
It, it's reimbursement for the trees on, on the Oklahoma Boulevard. The, the ones that perish because of the weather and, and things along those lines. That's what that grant is for, is to replace trees on the Oklahoma Boulevard.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to also speak to CJ?
Yes, um, I was just curious if you could help me to understand the restrictive covenants, Mr. Wiley. And then in, in, I have another question and it may or may not pertain to this particular ask as far as HUD is concerned, but there's like a section three in some of our agreements and, and you may have to walk me through this on another day. But I just want to make sure I understand a lot of, of what this particular agreement is going to do for us with this program.
This is Wiley Williams, the Deputy Municipal Counselor. This item is a requirement from HUD itself that the Still Yard Apartments is in the process of refinancing their loan that is guaranteed by HUD. And HUD, in order to protect itself in the, in its guarantee of this other loan, has asked us to commit to these restrictive covenants in our SP, Neighborhood Stabilization Programs, one and three, that we won't do anything that interferes with their guarantee of the loan. And it's just a requirement. We had similar restrictions before the refinance and they're just making us recommit to them.
Okay, thank you.
And Gary Brooks is on the line, I believe, if you have any questions for him.
Not, not at the moment, but I do, when we have time in the future, just want to visit with you about some other things that may pertain to some of these loans and just the programming in general.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes the items that we had pulled out for presentations or separate comment. So we are now in a position to adopt the consent docket if council is so inclined. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Mayor, my Prime Gov is not showing me that option.
And you have, you, okay, well, go ahead and how would you like to vote on the consent docket?
I'll vote yes, please. What were you going to ask? That sounds.
You did hit escape. You did all the usual things we do, right? You're, you're.
Escape? What?
Well, sometimes we get, people get stuck on the, they're, they're actually looking at Zoom and they don't realize it and.
Oh, no, I am. I appreciate that. No, that's not it.
All right. Okay, but you wanted to vote yes. You said that, right?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Passes unanimously. All right, item eight concurrent docket. We have items A through L. We can take with one motion. We had a motion. What's going on? Oh, okay. Well, we had a motion up and then it went away though. There we go. All right, motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're moving on to item nine, items requiring separate votes. We have a few zoning cases here. We've got item 9A. This is on an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 10501 East I-40 Highway from going from R1 to RA. And Councilman Stone, we have the applicant here if needed.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I found out there was some additional protests on this application this morning. So what I would like to do is to be able to flesh out those concerns and just let the applicant know that I will be reaching out to him. And I'm going to make a move, would like to go ahead and move to defer this item for two weeks, please.
Okay. So let's bring up a motion to defer this to the June 8th meeting. Motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Mayor, are we going to correct who made this motion?
Good question.
There we go. Looks like that is handled. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. Okay, 9B, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 9841 Southwest 44th Street going from AA to R1. And Councilwoman Young, we have two people who have signed up to speak in opposition.
Good morning, Ms. Rare. Thank you. Before we get to the opposition, I, I think there have been expressed some concerns with the notice that went out for this particular item. So I would like to defer it to June 8th so that we can get that addressed and make sure that we have all the parties available to discuss it.
Okay. Let's bring up the motion to defer then. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. And for those two folks who had signed up to speak, this item will appear on the June 8th agenda. Okay, now we're at 9C, ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 112 Southwest 134th Street going from PUD 1771 to SPUD 1292. Councilman Greenwell, no one has signed up to speak. Okay, thank you. So there's, the applicant is not with us? No one has signed up. I don't know if. Okay. Do you know who the applicant is? Yeah, Johnson and Associates. Okay, sometimes Tim's just hanging out.
I was just, thank you, she let me, and this is Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant. This is pretty straightforward. We had done a PUD on this little commercial office park. And we had inadvertently left out the use unit for car wash. And we had a client come along and wanted to do a car wash north of the previously approved office building that was in the original pod and it would front onto 89th there. And so we added that use unit and that's the only change to the PUD. All the setbacks from the residential and everything remain the same.
And thank you. I, I do have one question. You know, the office that's shown on the southern section?
Yes, sir.
Is the only access, is that like a driveway or do they drive through the car wash parking lot to get to the office?
You know, that, what's, what's hard to see on this without the rest of the site plan to the west is that's a shared common drive on the west side of the, of the car wash strip. And that'll serve as a common drive back to the office as well as feed the other development to the west.
Yeah, that's great. Is, is there some kind of fence or something separating the car wash from that office area?
No, just landscape buffers, no internal setbacks or fencing. We will have a fence south of that office adjacent to the residential.
Yeah, and, and no problems in terms of lighting impacting the residential area?
Correct. The PUD, the previously approved PUD had the Oklahoma City standard lighting requirements to direct any overhead lighting away from the neighborhood. This will remain that way. There's no wall packs permitted on the back of that building. Everything will be directed in the parking lot away.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, with that, I'm moved for approval. Okay, got a verbal motion. Let's do that digitally now. Cast your votes as soon as you can. Councilman Stone Cypher, are you there? I'm told, waiting on your vote.
Sorry, Mayor.
Sure. All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, item 9D, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 14800 South Sooner Road going from PUD 1422 to SPUD 1297. This was deferred from May 11th. Councilman Stone, we have a couple of people signed up to represent the applicant. And then we also have somebody who signed up to speak in opposition.
Okay, can I get the name of the person that signed up in opposition?
Yes, that is Nathan Williams.
Okay, thank you. And is Doug one that signed up?
Yeah, we have Doug Walnuts and Dee Benham Kirk signed up in representation of the applicant.
Thank you. Why don't we hear from Doug first? I know, Doug, are you on?
I may need to star six, Doug.
Doug, are you able to hear?
Yes.
All right.
Doug, can you just talk a little bit about, okay, what you've been doing in this past week in order to kind of what you've agreed to in order to mitigate some of the additional concerns that were on there?
Sure. So, so again, Doug Walnuts with Walnuts Consulting and Advisory Services. We worked really closely with the Oklahoma City planning staff on the submission of this revised design statement encompassed under SPUD 1297. We had, the developer originally had sought to acquire this 4.33 acres that is currently encompassed under PUD 1422. And that zoning allows for eating establishments that both serve and don't serve alcohol, childcare centers, medical services and multi-story, multi-story commercial office space. And so really the only changes that, that my clients sought were to include use codes for a drive-through and drive-in restaurant on the southernmost 1.38 acres. Again, the planning staff had come back and suggested to us and we agreed to incorporate their suggestion that we would construct an eight-foot board-on-board privacy fence along the east side of the property versus the existing six-foot fence that is there today. We increased the landscape buffer from five feet to 10 feet along the east boundary. The actual green space, if you guys see the layout in front of you there, the actual green space between the residential property zone to the east and the actual Sonic will be more like 35 feet. So we'll, we'll go well beyond the 10-foot landscape buffer with a 35-foot landscape strip there between the Sonic and the, the residential properties in them. And we also agreed to place trees 20-foot on center all along that 1.38 acres between us and the neighbors to the east. We also agreed to place the speakers a minimum of 70 feet from the shared property line. And as you look at that map, you can see that from the residences themselves, the nearest speakers will be 200 and 250 feet respectively from the residence. So on our last council meeting, Mr. Nathan Williams had, had protested and objected to the Sonic and the Sonic going in adjacent to his property. And as you look at this map, Mr. Williams' property is the northernmost one on the corner of the Sonic development there. And he has approximately 176-foot linear feet backyard. And of that 176 feet, 43 feet of that is shared with the Sonic development. We had reached out to, to Mr. Williams, had a good conversation for about an hour and a half. And the developer had agreed to extend that eight-foot board-on- and the developer had agreed to extend that eight-foot board-on-board privacy fence an additional 20 feet beyond the 45 feet that the property is adjacent to Mr. Williams' backyard right now. So we'll make the investment to extend the fence an additional 20 feet. We also agreed to add three to four additional trees in the, the green space adjacent to Mr. Williams' home. And, you know, and, you know, I'd say in closing, we tried to do everything we could, you know, above and beyond the planning staff's recommendations that we'd already incorporated. We tried to go above and beyond to be a good neighbor to, to Mr. Williams. So today, we're just respectfully seeking approval from the Council of Spud, SPUD 1297.
Thank you. And Emmy, I'm sorry, what was the name of the protester?
I've got it. It's Nathan Williams.
Okay. Nathan, are you on?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. How are you doing today?
I'm great. How are you? Go ahead, Nathan.
Okay, I really appreciate you guys allowing me to this opportunity to be able to speak today. After the last city council meeting that we had, I had an opportunity to go out and talk with my neighbors in 14601 Amman Valley Drive, 14609 Amman Valley Drive, 14617 Amman Valley Drive, 1471, and 14709, and 14801. Each one of the families that I talked to were being put in there. If required, I can provide you signed protests from the neighbors. And so, one of our issues is that it's going to provide a major hotspot for cars coming in and out all day. And if you look at the design of the property, it's, it's a smaller footprint. Well, with the size of that footprint doing rush hour traffic, that's going to provide traffic that's going to overflow onto Sooner Road also. So it's going to cause traffic issues. 149th Street and Sooner Road, we've had many accidents over here. Another one of the issues that we have is that they want to, you know, Doug, I really had a good conversation with Doug and no disrespect to him, but, you know, this, this is our home. So we've looked at the six-foot fence that that's currently in, and they proposed to put an eight-foot fence. But the benefits of putting even in an eight-foot fence would not benefit us. If you look at the back fence line of all of our properties, you have an elevation. Well, that elevation is a major drop. So from the back of our houses, those, that, that eight-foot fence based on elevation only comes about two foot feet up. At 14709, which is, I'm pretty sure most, you know, Deputy Chief Butler of the Oklahoma City Police Department, that's her home. And it's really going to have the worst effect on her home. They use that back area of their house and even to put a two-foot fence, a fence that's two foot taller would not be a benefit for them. Her and Ms. Harris do not want that behind their house. They don't want the dumpster behind their house. But, but Chief Harris is is a very professional person. She respects each and every person on the city council. Her job is important. What she does for the city is important. Also, one of the other persons that do not want this is at 609, which is Officer Kosch. He doesn't want it there either. They gave me authorization to speak for them today. Also, the Griffins gave me authorization to speak for them today. The Longs and the Trons gave me permission to speak for them today, and the Nuns gave me permission to speak for them today. We also looked at that with the cars coming in, you know, they did a study on the noise pollution. And when they looked at the noise pollution, they only took into account on this study what the speakers would do. They did not take into account the unwanted noise from mufflers, the unwanted noise from loud cars. They did not take into effect the music that would be playing. They did not take into, they did not look at how would loud customers affect the residents that will be adjacent to them. And so each and every one of our houses have raised ceilings. Those raised ceilings that we have amplify the noise inside of our houses. So this is going to affect three disabled vets in this neighborhood. It's going to affect two police officers. It's going to affect three defense contractors for the Department of Defense. And so it's going to have an effect on a lot of us. So we're, we're suggesting, and we need to provide the signatures for the protest for those who are directly affected, we can do that. We're suggesting that you can, that we keep it at PUD 1422. I think that the original city council members, when they was looking at it, took into effect that when, when Peppewell Oaks was put in, we were supposed to be designed to be a slightly upper, upper-scale neighborhood. And they, and then they also took into account that each and every one of those backyards, our wastewater air raid system goes off. Looking at the customers, and you know, wastewater system and people sitting outside in the parking lot eating or sitting at the picnic tables will, when that wastewater get airborne, it, we don't know what type of effect it's going to have on them. If we had a choice, none of us want a restaurant back there, but if we had a choice, we would prefer that we put a healthier option back there. We know that fast food, so Sonic basically serve high-fat foods, high-calorie foods, high-sugar foods, and which is not good for any of our healths. And so when we moved here, we all knew there wasn't a restaurant here, and we, we accept, that's what we wanted. That's why we chose this area. And so for health concerns, I think that it would be a bad idea for the neighborhood just to put in a fast food restaurant because you have the increased risk of heart attacks, strokes, diabetes. And it's just kind of funny, Mayor. I'm 54 years old. In 1992, my mother died at the age of 54, the age that I am now. She went into a diabetic coma and had a heart attack and died. And so for me, I'm predispositioned toward health issues. I do not want to have to smell hamburgers cooking in my yard. I do not want to have to smell, and that's going to be from 8 to 11 at night. I don't want to have to smell that. Also, those cars that would be pulling up in that drive-through, those lights would shine directly into Officer Butler's, Deputy Chief Butler's house. And so it would be a major distraction for her. It's a major distraction for me. And then also the other issue that all of us had is that the exhaust fumes that come off of the restaurant, those will attract rodents. And that field right there is kind of prone toward rodents. But if you, if you put a restaurant in there, you know, rodents smell food. They live for food. That's going to draw more rodents into that neighborhood and cause more of an infestation. And that's one of the things that we're trying to avoid is dealing with a rodent infestation in our neighborhood. And I know what the Oklahoma standard is. You know, our Oklahoma standard is that we take care of each other in Oklahoma. And I have seen you guys on the city council look out for the Oklahoma standard, and that's what I really appreciate about, really appreciate about this team that, that's working here today and what you've done, Mayor Hope, under your leadership. I appreciate you. But at, but at the end of the day, we would like for it to remain PUD 1422 instead of adding a fast food restaurant. Not just for property values, but for health reasons also. I think, make sure that I didn't have anything else on there to say, but I appreciate your time. Like I said, with the, with the eight-foot fence, it wouldn't be a benefit to add an eight-foot because the elevation drop is not going to be a benefit. Doug provided me a new drawing to where the trees would be at, and there's a lot of gaps in between the trees that would not help dead and sound. And it's nothing that they can do to stop the exhaust fumes from overflowing into our, into our backyards, into our, our home with the scent and the smell. And it's nothing that they would be able to do to stop the increase of rodents from coming into our area. So the type of restaurant, I think we will be fine with. We said, they said, well, you know, at the most if we had to go with 1422, we said Olive Garden will be fine, but none of us are open to having a restaurant there, a fast food restaurant there. And then another thing I had, I'm sorry, I forgot, sir. Was also when the neighbors would talk to, had the conversation, they were under the influence that they didn't have any choice that the rezoning would take place. And I was telling them that they do, we do have a choice to speak to the city council and to tell them that we aren't in favor of it. So that's what they was under the influence, that they had, it had to be rezoned. And so I conclude my speaking, sir. Thank you for hearing. Appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Nathan. Nathan, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your concerns. I can tell you, I too have had many talks with the developer on this project. They honestly, from my standpoint, and I think you alluded to it, they've been great to work with in trying to make sure that any negative impacts of this are negated as much as, as much as possible. You know, I will point out, it's right next to the Tinker Federal Credit Union, which also has a drive-through. It's a, this is a pretty small, as far as Sonic skill, this is a pretty small layout. It's basically the width of one of the lots next door. So I, I don't personally see it as necessarily going to be a high, high, high-use area or development. I think most of the traffic will probably be mid-afternoon when people stop by to get their slushy or, or whatever it is. They did, you know, incorporate the sound study, which I've been through. They've agreed to the additional trees, the extending of the fence and everything else. And I can understand that having that development there isn't going to be advantageous to you. It never was, but we also do know that Center eventually is going to develop. That's the whole reason for that green belt between your backyard fence and Center. Regards to traffic, Center already carries a ton of traffic. I, I don't foresee this adding any additional traffic onto Center. So with that, I get to make a decision, which is difficult because I do understand a lot of your concerns there. But on the basis of what the developers presented for us and those type of things, I think I have to go ahead and move for approval.
Councilman, may I ask one, one question? Those trees that are going to go there, who will be responsible for their maintenance? I, I probably would never even think to ask that question had it not been for what we just endured in February and October. And I understand like their need there.
That would be responsible, responsibility of the property owner.
In that, well, what does that mean? If it's all along the neighborhood, so the, the, whoever owns the house would now be responsible for the tree that gets planted?
The trees will be, the trees will be set in the green space that the developer is leaving along that fence. And he'll be responsible for maintaining that green space as well as those trees.
So in this instance, Sonic would be in charge of that until somebody else comes in? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, so we've got a verbal motion from Councilman Stone. There we go. It's online now. A second. Cast your votes for approval.
I don't see it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Rumbling, so maybe I'm not the only one. It shows me the voting option, but it's not saying who. I know Councilman Stone moved it, but it's not showing who seconded it.
It was a second by Councilman Stone Cypher, and you voted yes, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Just happened while you were asking that question. Okay, all right. That passed, and so we're moving on to item E, 9E. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2728 Southwest 2nd Street, going from R2 to SPUD 1304. And Councilwoman Hammond, I don't have anyone who's signed up to speak on this.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is just a rezoning to permit office and warehouse and seems very compatible with the area, so I will move for approval.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 9000 West Memorial Road, going from AA to SPUD 1305. Councilman Stone Cypher, no one has signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. This is a rezoning to permit an expansion of an existing hub facilities by Cox Communications. There were no protests, and it was approved by planning, so I'd move for its approval, please.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for denial. It's at 10317 North Hassett Street, going from R1 to PUD 1813. There was 92.6% protest, which means that if a motion was made for approval, that would require seven votes. Councilwoman Nice, we have two people who have signed up to speak in opposition.
Is the applicant present?
No one has signed up. I don't know who the applicant is.
That's fine. Well, let's hear from those who have signed up to speak, please.
We have Daniel Morton. Amy, do we see Daniel on the line?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Daniel Morton, 10-500 Joshua Drive. I live on the property directly north of the subject property. Just want to say a couple of quick points. Opposition in our community is almost unanimous, as you see from the 92.6% protest. The proposal is fundamentally incompatible with the surrounding R1 zoning. And I just want to say that's not theoretical incompatibility. It's readily established by the history on this property where they admittedly, they have said themselves that they've operated this business illegally for the last four years. What I really want to say is that what is disturbing is the noise. There's illegal burning. There's trash and debris accumulation, and there's And there's property damage that all contribute to decreased enjoyment of our own properties. I can hear the chainsaw activity and the earth-moving activity inside my own home. It often starts early in the morning, like seven AM, and sometimes it doesn't even start until seven forty-five PM, and it goes on until after dark. In heavy rainstorms, trash washes under the fence line onto my property. So what I want to say, rezoning won't correct any of those issues and will actually prevent the city from coming in and enforcing zoning and code violations. I believe this application is not made in good faith. It is merely made in an attempt to avoid enforcement of city zoning and code rules. Additionally, they're requesting some kind of agricultural zoning, is what it says in the application. However, none of the activities are agricultural use. They fit under industrial and/or commercial use. So that's really all I have to say. I think that the submissions in protests are very comprehensive. They establish the overall history on the property and the unlikelihood that rezoning will improve the situation for any of his neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Collins?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm rep, my name's Bill Collins. My office is in twenty-five hundred South Broadway, Suite one forty in Edmund. I represent Mr. Morton. He's asked me to say a few words also. I've been doing this a long time. For approximately forty-five years, I've been doing zoning practice. And I can tell you without a doubt that this application is the most audacious one I've ever run across as far as rezoning is concerned. This is a blatant violation of all zoning principles. You're right here in the middle of what should be a quiet residential neighborhood. This applicant has literally established a full-scale industrial facility. He's got, there's outdoor storage, there's chainsaw operating at all hours, outdoor processing, illegal burning. He uses it as a trash dump. He's always moving industrial equipment in and out of the property. There's industrial traffic on residential streets. And it's not getting any better. It's getting worse. Mr. Morton just told you that the hours of operation of the chainsaw are now such that it's, it's starting at a quarter of eight in the evenings. It didn't used to be that late. The trucks are getting bigger. The loads are also necessarily getting bigger, coming in and out. The residential streets have been destroyed by this. I was out there again last night. And it's pathetic what this man has done, not only to his property, but also to, to the neighbor's property. I certainly request that the city council not only deny this application, but also take all steps necessary to put an immediate end to this illegal activity on this property. Now, I've been talking to City Attorney's Office, Rita Tally in particular. I believe she is on top of the situation. She got the restraining order that had been, in my opinion, wrongfully issued by the court lifted. But I think this case is now ripe to be, for the city to take immediate actions to bring this, this activity to a halt. If you have any further questions, I'm available for questions, and I think Mr. Morton is also.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, that concludes the people who signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Morton and to Mr. Collins for your words. And also, let me say thank you to Ms. Debbie in our office, our Development Services Office and our Municipal Counselors Office for working diligently behind the scenes pertaining to this particular request. And I've seen the pictures of this property. I have, I have read the mini pages from the neighbors, and I think this is a rarity, at least since I've been on council, that I've ever seen over ninety percent opposition for a zoning case. So I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Tanner, if he can help me out. As far as, it sounds like there's not a business permit. Is, does he have a business permit for his hours of operation? And is there a way for us to move forward as far as restricting the, the hours of operation?
Well, we, we currently have a, have been working the illegal business, and we're on hold until this zoning case went through. The, just the noise of the chainsaws could be a noise violation. We'd have to monitor it based on the noise ordinance. But there's really no license that he'll be able to get to operate a business there because of the zoning. Lead to an additional violation and potentially a citation if he continues to work.
Okay, so with that, that means we can restrict the biz as far as him being able to do the, the work that he's doing in some aspects.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this, to me, is a no-brainer. I'm going to ask that we deny this application, and I'll wait for the, the screen to appear.
All right, so this is going to be a motion to deny. And to, just to clarify, this requires a simple majority, not a supermajority. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, and I do understand we'll continue to work through this, so our neighbors will have more comfort. So I appreciate everyone in our city staff for all their assistance in this particular manner.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we've got some parking items. H and I might be kind of together because we've got somebody who signed up to speak on them, but H is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the north side of Northwest Fifty-Sixth Street. And then item I is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing ninety-degree angle parking within a setback parking area on the north side of Northwest Fifty-Sixth Street. Councilman Cooper, Doug Hartwig, has signed up to speak on these two items.
Well, let's hear from whoever signed up to speak in this.
Okay. Doug Hartwig, are you there?
Maybe the star six.
The star six, Doug, if you're having trouble being heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So this is, I'm Doug Hartwig, I'm with Crafton Toll. I represent Pinkston Dentistry. This particular site is landlocked. There, he cannot, he needs additional parking. He can't acquire any land around him. And so his proposal is to provide three additional parking places using the public right-of-way along Northwest Fifty-Sixth Street. And we have gone through all the review with the city staff and the Transportation Department. And I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Cooper?
Yeah? Um, I would just say thank you to Pinkston Dental for working with us. I mean, there's been moments where we've, I'm sure you all have seen now on May Avenue where we, we being Public Works, Eric Winger and I, having that painted on May Avenue where actually alerts motorists how to access Northwest Fifty-Sixth Street, in addition to the signage that exists along the public right-of-way. So, yeah, just a lot of, a lot of work that needs to go into making sure that people can access this kind of very strangely set up area for motorists. So, and then, of course, making sure that we have parking for bulk with differing abilities is always going to be top of mind for me. So with that, I would move for approval.
Okay, so consider that a motion to approve item nine H. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Is Councilwoman Young, are you still with us? There we go. Passed unanimously. And then Councilman Cooper, I expect you wish to make a motion on item nine I as well.
Yes, same, same song, different verse.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine J is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled in a setback parking area on the north side of Northeast Seventh, et cetera. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, um, yeah, I will, pretty much all there is to it, so I will move for approval when it comes up on the screen.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nine K is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of North Walnut, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll move for approval, but I will say I have already seen people parking on this side. We have not fully approved this yet, people. So let's go through this process so we can make sure you are legal if you are going to be parking on this side of the street. So I'll move for approval.
We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Okay, Councilwoman Young?
Hasn't come up yet. I vote yay.
Okay. Passed unanimously.
I have L.
Councilman Cooper, if you're going to vote, we need your camera on, just heard reference on the next votes. If your camera is off, you can't vote. Okay, nine L is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing two-hour time-limited parking on the west side of North Walnut, et cetera. This, this is different, right, Councilwoman Nice? Yes, it is, yeah.
Yes, this one is just a regular parking place instead of a disabled parking place, but again, I'm excited that we'll actually be able to park in front of the building and enjoy all of these spaces, so I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilwoman Young?
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Mark me for yay, please.
Okay. Passed unanimously. Item nine M is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a two-hour time-limited parking to, on the east side of South Broadway, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And now we are at nine N. This is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing fifteen-minute time-limited parking on the east side of South Broadway Avenue, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll move for approval. I'm assuming this is for drop-off and pickups for fifteen minutes.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nine O is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the east side of South Broadway, near West Oklahoma City Boulevard, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nine P is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing forty-five-degree angle parking within a proposed setback parking area on the east side of South Broadway Avenue, near West Oklahoma City Boulevard, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
This is the last one, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, that brings us to item nine Q. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they have not.
All right, then, we'll proceed to the resolution found at nine Q two, declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We can bring that up for a motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nine R one is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they have not.
All right, then we will proceed to the resolution found at nine R two, declaring that the structures are insecure. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, nine S one is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they have not.
So we'll proceed to the resolution found at nine S two, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at nine T. This is a resolution setting a public hearing date of June 22nd, 2021, for a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget for the fire sales tax fund, the general fund, the grant fund, special assessment districts fund to sales tax fund and directing city clerk to public, city clerk to publish appropriate notice. Craig, I believe we have a report, a presentation on this thing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, we do. Just wanted to point out, this, this will have multiple funds that are involved, like the mayor pointed out in reading the item. But one of the things I just wanted to point out, and I did visit with the council members on this, was part of this is an amendment to the general fund towards the end of the year here to allow us to transfer some funds for some specific purposes. Doug will talk a little bit about that. But really, it's in response to revenues performing as strongly as they have by comparison to what we anticipated when we started the year. So I'm going to turn it over to Doug Dowler, Budget Director, and let him walk through the proposed budget amendment.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Doug Dowler, Budget Director, and this is the third amendment to the FY21 budget. We are proposing to change five funds with this amendment. First is the fire sales tax. The Fire Department is asking for budget authority to spend $1.3 million on higher than expected overtime costs, additional firefighting tools and equipment, and for recruit overages. And actually, coming up next on the agenda is a companion item that authorizes those expenditures in the fire sales tax fund to match up with what's being done with the amendment here. The next fund, the general fund, has experienced higher than projected sales and use tax this year, and the amendment adds $20 million to the general fund budget from those two sources. And we plan to use that authority provided for a $9 million transfer to the special purpose fund to be used for projects that are consistent with the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax Fund program and the criteria established through the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board. An additional $7 million will be transferred to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund to provide a capital maintenance reserve for city facilities and to help absorb some of the higher than expected costs for capital projects that are occurring due to the significant inflation that's occurring in raw materials right now. Finally, $4 million will be transferred to the special purpose fund to create a reserve for city supported debt. This reserve will help protect the general fund in future years should the revenue sources dedicated for the various purposes be unable to support the full amount of the debt service requirements. The Grant Management Fund is being increased by $19.7 million to incorporate the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that was created at the end of last calendar year. This program is being implemented by the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma and the Community Cares Partners. They've been providing assistance since March with this program. The Special Assessments Fund is a new fund being created with this amendment. Oklahoma law allows for a neighborhood to petition the city to create an assessment district for the purpose of improving the roads in the neighborhood. The city sells bonds for the work and assesses the properties in the neighborhood to repay the bonds over time. In the past, these districts have not been part of the budget process since the city was acting more of, as more of a facilitator between the contractor and the neighborhood. But a change in accounting standards now requires that we reflect those districts in our budget. And so this amendment adds the $2.8 million in assessment district revenue and expenses we anticipate this year. It doesn't add new districts or anything like that, it just recognizes them on our budget. Finally, we are increasing the sales tax budget in the zoo sales tax by $400,000. Each month, we transfer the portion of sales tax dedicated to the zoo, to the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust. With sales tax coming in higher than expected, we will need the extra budget authority to transfer all of the final sales tax check in June over to the zoo trust. So these changes add up to $44.2 million. They bring the city's FY21 budget to $1,733,571,375. And to try to help avoid confusion with the FY22 budget that we're also working on at this point, we're going to delay the public hearing and adoption of this amendment to June 22nd. So next week on, June 8th, we'll be looking at, I'm sorry, June, in the next council meeting on June 8th, we'll be looking at adoption of the FY22 budget. And then this amendment will come back on June 22nd for consideration and adoption. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Doug?
No, I'm sorry. Doug Marks, Stone Cypher here, how are you today?
Very good, thank you, sir.
You know, and looking at the city manager's report on sales and use tax collections, if you would have told me a year ago today that if we look at year to date FY21 versus year to date FY20 with sales tax, we'd only be at a minus 0.2%. I would have, I would have just said, no way, no way. So I'm, and the same with use tax. I mean, we're up 16.2%. But the point is, I think it's really prudent, especially with these two reserve funds, the Capital Maintenance Reserve and the Reserve for City Supported Debt that we think about our future. And I commend staff for coming up with these proposals. And I also commend staff for what they've done the last 12 months in dealing with this pandemic and, and dealing with our, our resources and our revenue. The one thing I was a little confused on, Doug, was the, the special assessment districts fund, which is that Title XI where a majority of the property owners can petition to have things done in their neighborhood, which I'm a big proponent of, and we've done that a couple of times in Ward A. I don't understand the mechanism here. How's that working again? Can you explain that a little more to me, please?
So what happens the, when they have a successful petition for the improvement in the roads, we will sell bonds and contract for the work to be done in their neighborhood. Usually it's something like going from, say, gravel roads to asphalt or something, you know, an improvement there. And I don't know the specific length of time. I'm assuming they're 20 year bonds or something to that effect. So it gives the neighborhood plenty of time to pay them back. And we just, we collect the assessments and then we pay the contractor from that. The contractor agrees to, I believe, to accept that payment over time from the bond. And so we're just kind of acting as the facilitator between the neighborhood who's paying it and the contractor doing the work. So in the past, they've shown as sort of what's called an agency fund on our books. It'd be similar to the sales tax we collect that we remit to the state, say, at the, a city facility that collects sales tax. It's not really our money. We're holding it until we pay that entity, in the case of sales tax, the state, or in this case, the bondholder, the bond owners, which are generally the contractors. We're holding that money for the residents who are, who have the district. So I don't know if that makes more sense or if that, if there's other questions you have on that.
Yeah, I, I guess the thing is that the 2.8 million that's referenced under special assessment district funds at page two of this agenda item, is that, is that funds that we are creating or funds that we're holding as a result of the work to be performed?
Right, it's, it's, it's work that's already been performed, then these are the assessments to help pay back the, the bonds on that. So, and we have seven districts that we're currently, they're currently in that process of paying back the bonds. So, you know, roughly $400,000 a year in each of those districts.
Thank you very much. I understand and I appreciate it.
Yeah, that was, Councilman Stone Cypher asked exactly the questions I had. My only follow up is, I'd like to have a better understanding. You say some of these assessment districts are already in existence. I'd like to have a better understanding of where those are. I think that'd be, no, I don't know, I'm, I'm just very intrigued by that.
James, I can give you two examples. And I, I know that people that wanted to get a, a road resurfaced in a more prompt fashion have used that for a vehicle. And then in my ward, we had an issue of someone that was having some problems with well water, and they had to find another source of water. And I think they actually hooked up the city water. But to, to get the infrastructure done quickly, they used Title XI and had a majority of the property owners agree to do it. And I think, Craig, remind me if I'm wrong, but when you pay this, your, your assessment, monthly assessment comes through your water bill. And so that's how we, the, the vehicle by which the property owner pays back the city.
I'm going to have to confirm that. I thought it was on the property taxes. I don't know, Kenny Jordan or one of the attorneys is on, can help us with that?
At any rate, James, it's a good vehicle for people that have a problem that needs to be fixed quickly.
And, and we can provide you with the list of those seven districts that are currently active.
So, yeah, I really appreciate that context, Mark. That's, that's really intriguing. So it sounds like it could be any sort of infrastructure in terms of resurfacing. Sounds like water. Does this include like sidewalks and street lights?
Yeah, I've got some materials on it on Title XI and what it includes. I'll send it to you.
Thank you, thank you. And I'd like to learn more as well about, as, as City Manager Freeman was saying, like where those, from where those revenue, is it, is it, is it through the property tax water? I would love to know more about that.
We'll get some additional information along with the location of each one of those and more information, you know, about locations, what types of infrastructure can be paid for, what situations lead to that, and then how it's assessed.
And then, yeah, that would be very helpful. And then is there, I mean, I might be asking for too much here, but is this also a scenario where, let's say it's a neighborhood that's, you know, working class, working middle class, maybe they worry about adding on too much to their property tax or whatever it is. Is this also a situation where grants are available to help mitigate some of those costs? Again, I'm just asking aloud, I do not know, this is kind of brand new to me.
And we'll have to get you more information on this. I don't think in these situations that there are grants that are typically available in a situ, in, in circumstances like what lead to these special assessment districts. But we'll get you some additional information on that.
Thank you all.
Will you please add me to that list too? Because I, I have some re-engaged neighborhood associations that I think would love this kind of information if they hadn't received it before.
Sure, we'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Craig, on your prior question, I just stepped out for a second, but Craig Keith heard the question and he has an answer for it. If you want an answer now, or we can provide it to you later.
You know, if he has, if he has an answer on that assessment, that'd be great.
Right, here's Craig.
This is Craig Keith with the Municipal Counselor's Office. For water and sewer assessments that are front and paid by the Water Utilities Trust, those go on the utility bills. Street assessments and other assessments are done through the property tax process.
Great, we're both all right.
That's right. And, but we'll still follow up with a summary of the information that Nikki and James were asking about to make sure you all have information on the programs. And again, it's the situations that, that these assessments will work into. So we'll make sure that we have that information for you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Doug, we could adopt the resolution found at item 19. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Mr. Mayor, put me down for yay again, please.
Okay. That was Councilwoman Young. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're at nine U, one and two. There's a public hearing here regarding a resol, the resolution amending to June 16th, 2020 city council resolution approving certain fire listed and other sales tax expenditures and/or projects for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And then item U two is the resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 22nd, amending to June 16th, 2020 city council resolution, et cetera. I think we have maybe a brief presentation on this, and then I'll go back to the public hearing. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, our Fire Chief, Richard Kelly, is with us just to give a quick presentation on this, or just talk about the amendment here. This is consistent with what Doug presented previously on the budget amendment. And just let Chief Kelly talk about the projects that they're funding with this.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Can you, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Fire Chief Richard Kelly, I'm just here to talk about the amendment real quick. And basically, we have 400,000 that we're amending our Exhibit A, which is an increase because of a substantial number of retirements. So we've had a higher number of overtime this year, which actually falls under our public safety sales tax. So we're increasing that 400,000. And then we have about 500,000 that we're increasing on a significant increase on purchasing of our firefighting tools and equipment. It's just some things that we're trying to outfit some of our new fire apparatus. So we've seen an increase in that. And then we had an overage of 400,000. It's our overage recruit position. We actually had our recruits that were in those overage positions, basically because of the, the frozen 21 positions we had. We had quite a few that were in overage positions this year that we seen an increase of about, we're asking for about $400,000 increase in that. That is one of the areas that we had reduced last year in our budget. And keeping those recruits in those overage positions required that we increased that by 400,000. That is everything that we're asking for in that increase. So be welcome to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for the chief? Amy, has anyone, Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under the public hearing at item nine U one?
No, they have not.
All right. We'll close the public hearing then, and we could consider the resolution found at nine U two. And this again is just being introduced today, set for final hearing on June 22nd. If the council wants to make a motion, we can give them that option on the screen. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Stone Cypher, have you had the opportunity to vote? Passes unanimously. And again, that'll be on final hearing June 22nd. I am, got to step away, and I'm handing the chair over to Vice Mayor Nice for item nine B and on.
Thank you. We have item V, nine B, and that's a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust by the issuance of one or more series of its Clean Water State revolving fund promissory note. Mr. City Manager, I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, ma'am, we do. Excuse me. We have Chris Browning on for, he's our utilities director. And Chris will give us an update on this and the purpose for this funding. This is using the state's water, the revolving fund through the Water Resources Board. And so, Chris, I'll turn it over to you and let you make the presentation.
Thank you, Craig. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. The council resolution presented today approves and authorizes the Water Trust to issue a Clean Water State Revolving Fund Promissory Note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. The Water Trust will use the proceeds of the not to exceed $55 million Water Resources Board loan to fund the automated meter reading replacement project citywide over the next five to eight years. The benefits of participating in the SRF program include no debt service reserve requirement, which saves us 10% in borrowing costs. We get low interest rates and flexible terms. This loan will be a 15 year term to match the life of the assets. The benefits of the project where we're going to use those funds include the development of a meter replacement program based on analytics rather than meter age, so that the meters will be more accurate during their lifespan. It also eliminates misreads that cause billing errors and disputes. It eliminates the need to estimate water usage during adverse weather conditions such as those we experienced in February. It lowers the cost of meter reading and eliminates safety concerns related to meter reading. Right now, we have an estimated number of meters throughout the city of about 240,000. So we will be replacing these meters with the automated readers over that term of the project. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for item nine B. We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have item nine W. This is a resolution adopting the May 2021 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement. Next, we have item nine W. This is a resolution adopting the May 2021 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan as recommended by the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This, this is just an update on the plan for the Better Streets Program, the implementation plan, and we do these periodically as projects are approved and recommended. And so Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, will give us an update on this amendment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. The, the May 2021 update that you have on the agenda today is item nine W. It's just the next update for the Better Streets Safer City Program. It includes a recommendation to add a cost of $2.4 million in a new project. This project will be the Britain Old Town Street Escape Enhancement Project. It's one that has been considered on the list with the advisory board for some time, and they're now at a position where they have available funds to recommend this project and include it in the overall plan. If this is approved, the project will move forward. This will include Britain from Western to Chertel, and the goals of the project are pedestrian access improvements, new lighting, on-street parking, and also landscaping. And so, design is not yet underway, but upon approval, the advisory board will begin working with staff to meet with stakeholders, develop plans that will be presented to the council once they're ready. I can answer any additional questions that you have.
Are there any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for this item nine W. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Winger. Up next, we have item nine one. It's a resolution authorizing a municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Nicholas Martin be the Oklahoma City of Oklahoma City. And I do understand that there is not a need for executive session unless the council would like to entertain that motion. Otherwise, we will move to item nine X two. Oh, no, we won't. We will authorize this resolution otherwise, and I'll entertain a motion for that. Have a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Thank you. Passes unanimously. I will move on to nine Y. We have claims recommended for denial. Has anyone signed up to speak for this?
No, they have not.
Okay. And I understand there's no need for executive session, so I will entertain a motion for the claim recommended for denial for nine Y one. Have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. And passes unanimously. And we have 10A. This is claims recommended for approval. Has anyone signed up to speak for this?
No, they have not.
Thank you. With that, I understand we do not need executive session, so I will entertain a motion for 10A one for approval of this recommendation. All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We move now to item 11, items from council. And we'll start with the business at hand that is listed. Item 11A, ordinance to be introduced and adopted with emergency amending ordinance number 26,451 to extend the 365-day moratorium to 545-day moratorium. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance is the product of something that began back in 2020. We first, I think, had a declared a temporary moratorium of 180 days, and then in October of 27, 2020, we extended that. I would say that this extension is appropriate and necessary for several reasons, and I think we have someone here to speak today, and I'll comment after whoever's going to speak from legal or planning as to the moratorium. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Jeff Butler, Planning Director. This, as Councilman Stone Cypher mentioned, it's, it's something that has been in the works for a while. We need a little bit more time. We have a draft ordinance in that we have circulated amongst interested parties, including and especially sign code company or sign companies and billboard companies, and we have received a lot of good feedback from them. And there is, that's still ongoing, and we need a little bit more time to finalize some things. Some companies are still doing a little bit of research and suggest, suggesting alternative approaches. So we want to give them a little bit more time to work through that. So that's kind of the reason why this has been ongoing and is still ongoing. Happy to answer any questions.
The one thing I will say is that hats off to Jeff and his staff and to legal, to Kenny and his staff on really reaching out to members in the sign industry and getting their input and their involvement. And I think one of the things that's made this necessary is there's a couple of cases that are out there looming. One's currently, there's a petition for cert in front of the Supreme Court that came out of the Fifth Circuit, and then there's another Seventh Circuit case that could affect what we are doing. And so I think the prudent thing to do is to exercise some caution here in light of the petition for cert in front of the United States Supreme Court. And I think it's also prudent and helpful to make sure we have everybody's input. So I would move for the approval of this ordinance at this time, please.
All right, are there any questions? And we will entertain that motion. We have a motion and a second, please place your vote.
And Your Honor, at this time, I would move that this be passed with an emergency.
We also need to entertain the emergency, or do we need to entertain that as well?
Yes, we need to.
Yes.
With the emergency, please.
Thank you. Let us do that business as well. Please cast your votes. And we do need seven for this to be moved to an emergency. And we do have it pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 11B is a resolution raising awareness regarding period poverty and declaring May 24th through the 30th, 2021 to be Period Poverty Awareness Week. I will defer to Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So yeah, so this is actually pretty exciting in some ways. Two years ago, right around this time, myself and Vice Mayor Nice participated in a weekend event to, to do this very thing. It was awareness raising. We got to pack some little kits that were, I think we're going to go to a school to provide for, for youth who were menstruating at school and may be caught without any, any products. And I came and back to council and talked about going to that event. And there was apparently someone out there listening and sparked their interest in kind of the, the issue of period poverty, which for those who might not be familiar with the concept is that, you know, for people who menstruate, those products, whether they're pads, tampons, menstrual cups, you know, Midol, whatever, you know, aspirin, all that stuff, it costs money, and it's an extra cost that, that people who menstruate bear. In many states, including ours, those products are still subject to sales tax. So it's additionally, you know, essentially a medical need that, that's still being taxed as though it's not. And especially for those, those who live in poverty, just access to these products is that much more, can be much, that much more difficult. And I was, I was sort of brought, this issue was brought to light for me and just had never clicked in my brain before this, but when I was working at a shelter in Illinois, one of the items that we were constantly asked for, but rarely ever had was, was menstrual products and just realizing and recognizing the experience of not having a place to live, or you know, for many youth who, whose parents might be struggling financially, even, you know, being able to ask for the funds to go buy these products can be a huge burden on a family and on individuals. So this group, and just in the last year or so, has come together called Period OKC, and they came to us with a request for this resolution to mark this week as Period Poverty Awareness Week. And I'm just very excited for their work in the community. I believe they've generated and donated a couple thousand menstrual products to schools, shelters, community fridges around the, around the metro, just since they've gotten started and just really rallying to, especially in this really difficult time for a lot of families and for a lot of people, just take that one need off of their plate, if you will. So I'll pass it along to Vice Mayor Nice and Councilman Cooper if you want to say any words about this. But but yeah, that's, that's sort of the background of how we got here with bringing this resolution before council to just keep building that awareness, education and support for helping out our neighbors and those in our lives with just that taking this, this burden off of their plate financially for our neighbors. So.
Councilperson Cooper.
I'll just say thank you for bringing this resolution to my attention and providing the opportunity for me to join you all in, in this advocacy. As you all know, through film studies and political science as my background, I've become quite the student of history through the centuries. And so I'm rereading a book right now on, on just the, the Middle, Middle Ages. And I think something that's really, when I think about this particular issue, I, I'm thinking about what I was reading in terms of just through the centuries, particularly in Western Europe, just women existing not with a right to self-determination, but as property of their fathers, and then marriage not being something that had to do with love, and it was just this financial thing. And, and I just, I, I, I don't think that history is entirely done with us yet. And I just, I, anything I can ever do that advocates for bodily autonomy and self-determination and and access to, to healthcare and promoting those things, not just for women, but for, for, for every human being. But we, we just know that that history of, 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 of denying women those things is, is, it lingers in some pretty devastating ways. And so I just thought, you know, it made a lot of sense for me to add my, my voice to this resolution. And yeah, I look forward to finishing my book and listening a bit more to the voices of women who can help me better understand some of the issues facing them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and I'll say with Councilwoman Hammond and I being able to be a part of what happened a few years ago at the Capitol, actually, it seems like forever ago, unfortunately. I, I think it has brought more attention to the need of how we can provide better access as city entities as well. I have noticed and been tagged in quite a few different posts from other cities and municipalities that have made it a point to be intentional about having products in all of their city-operated facilities for folks to be able to, to have no shame when it comes to them being able to have those, those things that they need. And also, when we did our time and point count, I want to say, was it last year? It seemed like if it wasn't early last year, it was 2019. But one of the things that I took with me because of us being able to advocate at the Capitol pertaining to period poverty were female needs and the women who are experiencing displacement. That's the first thing they grabbed. So it's, it's needed for folks who don't have access. So I appreciate the, those who are doing this work and very proud to sign my name as well for us to recognize and acknowledge Period Poverty Awareness Week. So with that, would you like to entertain that motion, Councilwoman?
Absolutely. And yeah, if there's no questions or comments, I'll motion for approval when it comes up on the screen.
I don't know how the motion and second works when Councilwoman Nice is serving as Vice Mayor Nice. If, if it's possible, then I would say for her to be the second there, and I'll happily just say yes as a vote. But whatever the proper order of things is.
Yes, the chair is not supposed to make a motion. She can second it, though.
Vice Mayor, please go ahead and second if you'd like.
Well, I can second that motion. Thank you. All right, cast your votes, please. All right, passes unanimously. I'm going to say.
14 of us, what just happened?
We said double yes to this resolution. That's okay, too. Thank you. All right, while we work through that, I will go ahead and move around the horseshoe to our council members, and we'll start with Ward one, Councilman Carter.
Yeah, you know, my family and I had the, the privilege and honor of serving alongside of the, the Unity House and Victory Church, along with the Church Under the Bridge this past Sunday. We got to feed over 100 of our cities homeless and hurting. We had an amazing time getting to listen to the stories and getting to meet a lot of the different people there. I just want to thank them for the honor of being able to do so, and they're getting ready to celebrate their 10th, their 10th year coming in on June 13th, it looks like. And they're inviting everybody out that would love to join them at 3:00 PM on that Sunday. It'll be at 1801 Rest West Reno. We, we end up feeding everybody. We have a good time. There's music, there's conversation and just an abundance of getting to know each other. So I thank them again for that opportunity, and I look forward hopefully to having some others out there with us next time.
Thank you very much. And if you don't mind, let us know so we can join you.
Most definitely.
Thank you. Ward two, Councilperson Cooper.
Yeah, I'll second Vice Mayor Nice's request there. Councilman Carter, head us up. Happy to, happy to join when our availability allows for it. Otherwise, really, I just wanted to say thank you to some of the folk at Economic Alliance for once more inviting me to attend the Congress for New Urbanism. I attended a virtual version of that last week. It was really nice to have been to complete finals the prior week so that I could focus my attention on attending those virtual conferences. For those of you who are new to council, I would encourage you to look into the Congress for New Urbanism, and I would also encourage those of you who are watching and might be new to hear about it, I would also encourage you to, to look into it as well. I attended sessions on, you know, the, it's not just the nationwide housing crisis we're experiencing. This is a global housing crisis, and it's decades in the making, decades in the making. the making. And it was really nice to just hear different perspectives on how we got here and, and possible ways out. And it is a much more complicated story, full of a toolkit of solutions in fact. So it was really nice to, to attend again this year and hear those conversations and to know that we as a city are, are not alone in, in this struggle. And yet, at the same time, we are one of, as we've discussed previously on this body, one of the cities with the highest cost of living, which really just flies in the face of the, the story we've been told and have been telling ourselves now for years, you know, come to Oklahoma, low cost of living. And as it turns out, when you start adding transportation costs, whether that's the maintenance, car insurance, monthly payments, you start adding that to the story, a story of having to have a car to get around and, and having to have a car to get to, you know, educational attainment in a career tech or a university setting, it just becomes so difficult. So it was really nice to attend those conversations, to attend conversations about public transit and to know that our city has made some incredible MAPS4 investments in those directions. It was also nice to see some of our own residents presenting during that conference. I believe some folk from the Wheeler District presented. It was also nice to see in some of the keynote addresses, conversations about the legacy, the lingering legacy of unfortunately white supremacy baked into so many of our nation's laws, institutions and, and cultural institutions at that. But it was really encouraging to hear people talking about, again, the toolkit of ways out of, out of that history. And so it was really nice to see the Congress for New Urbanism having those conversations. And again, you know, when we talk about new urbanism, we're really just talking about, kind of taking us back, you know, a hundred years ago to the city's beginnings, which as you all have heard me talk about so much proudly, the history of Spanish Village, present day Casio, but it's about walkable, bikeable, well lit neighborhoods, you know, connected to each other through, through public transit and, and livable streets for people and for motorists. And I, so I'm really thankful to have that opportunity to not just join again this year, but to be ready for our city, Oklahoma City, playing host next year to the Congress for New Urbanism. And it was so cool to hear meeting after meeting, people talk about our city next year being that host. And I am just so thankful that, you know, God willing, with the pandemic and our rear view mirror next summer, in time for this conference, that we'll be able to play host and show them how we are looking to our past, learning from our past to help craft our future. So I just want to say thank you again for everyone for allowing me that opportunity to participate in that. And then again, always thank you to, you know, my students as finals week came to an end. I was looking at some, you call them end of the year assessments yesterday. I'm always so nervous about those. I just feel like I'm just a walking anxiety bubble a lot of the times, but some of them said some of the most generous things in response to the class we have this semester, reading Boomtown, comparing it to a PBS documentary on the Italian Renaissance, comparing our two cities Renaissance stories, comparing a documentary from PBS on black history to HBO's Watchmen, just in time for the centennial of the Tulsa Race Massacre. And, you know, our assignments were literally take a person or event from this particular black history documentary episode, compare it to a person or event from this episode of Watchmen. And y'all, the kids are all right. The things they are saying, the thoughtfulness with which they brought to their weekly paragraphs responding to that prompt I just described to you, the in-class discussions, even when they were disagreement, our country should be so thankful for the way those students modeled those conversations during a pandemic where we acknowledged the mental health concerns they were facing. I was, I remain so proud of the students at UCO and at OCU and so thankful for the opportunity they gave me to serve in the classroom with them. Again, I, I'm just, I want to cry thinking about the hard work so many of them put in this semester. I'm just so thankful for them. I'm so, so thankful for them. And then just hearing them respond to prompts where it was like, is Stanley Draper a Renaissance figure? If so, to whom would you compare him? And hearing them say, I don't know, maybe Cosimo de Medici. Y'all, I mean, these are some brilliant, smart kids in our English composition classes and our, across majors at OCU, taking the arts and human values class. So I just want to give a shout out to our students always and forever and just say thank you again for the opportunity to serve in our classrooms. Appreciate you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Ward Three, Councilwoman Young.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, a shout out to Parks and Recs. Summer pools are opening this weekend. Unfortunately, they're going to be on an alternating schedule until they can get some more lifeguards hired, but I know we are all ready to get outside and enjoy the summertime. So if you know anybody that is looking for a job, go to the city's website for careers and we'll put you to work. So the school for the, I'm sorry, the schedule for the pool openings are also on the city website. So real excited about that coming along. I'd also like to congratulate Sergeant Holloway with Oklahoma City Police Department, who recently received the Matthew Scott Evans Memorial Award for his dedication to traffic safety in our city. For those of you who don't know, Trooper Matt Evans and Oklahoma City Police Officer Jeffrey Romager died in the line of duty on August 31st of 2000 and this memorial is in, in Trooper Evans' honor. The Oklahoma City Police Department is currently participating in the Click It or Ticket Nationwide Campaign to encourage safe drivers and to buckle up and be safe out there. With Memorial Day weekend coming up, it's all the more important that safety be top of mind. With that being said, with Memorial Day coming up on Monday, I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the families who will be decorating the grave sites and remembering their family members who died in service to our country. We thank you for your sacrifice and God bless America. And that is all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Young. And we will move to Ward Four, Todd Stone.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I'm good.
Thank you, Councilman Stone. We will move to Ward Five, Councilman Greenwell. Is he not with us? No, he's not with us. All right, we'll move on to Ward Six, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, thank you. Um, just have a few things. I'd first like to just say thank you to everyone who came out for our hopefully inaugural South Side Stroll Bike Month event. Thanks to Park staff, specifically Katie Kapari down at the Pete White Wellness Center, was incredibly accommodating and helpful and supportive and helping us organize in the event, starting in their parking lot and just, and she's still, she's still dealing with us since we had to leave some supplies behind and then we'll go pick them up this week. But I just really appreciate her and her staff for, for helping us out, as well as for Embark for coming out with the electric bus to help folks learn how to put their bicycle on the, the bus racks. I just want to thank Krista Torghulson for coordinating that and for all the staff who, who came down to, to organize that. And also to Trek Bicycles, they are located in an automobile alley, but came down and provided free tune ups for attendees, even had some helmets and locks and things to give away to some kiddos. So just excited to explore some of our, our bike infrastructure on the South Side and help, help folks learn how to navigate it and navigate it safely. And just exciting generally for all of the, or excited about generally all of the Bike Month events that have taken place. Downtown OKC hosted a great Bike to Work Day last Friday with, you know, with kids showing up on, on their way to school and just really excited to see the, the bike community back, back in action since we kind of had to take a little pause last year. So just exciting for all those events to be taking place. And also, I'll just, I guess, say I echo everything Councilperson Cooper said about the Congress for New Urbanism. I was able to attend on the McLaughlin Scholarship, which is for elected or appointed officials and just appreciate them extending the offer to me. It was really amazing. I've not gotten to attend before, so getting, I'm hoping that next person, next year in person will be even more exciting. But thanks also to Urban Land Institute for hosting a few kind of limited seating in-person events to watch some of those keynotes together because they were, they were really fantastic and excited to see how we'll bring those conversations locally next year and new chances for additional folks to be involved who might not necessarily be able to travel to one of those events. And I think I'd just like to close out by our Reverend Steele at the beginning of the meeting mentioned that today is the one year anniversary of George Floyd being murdered. It strikes me too, I'm in my full-time job, I'm working, the organization I work for is partnering with the John Hope Franklin Center in Tulsa to put on some of their events this week in commemoration of the race massacre. And just thinking about that being the 100 year anniversary to that event, you know, I just think, you know, the folks that lived 100 years ago probably would look at us right now and maybe feel like we've come quite a ways in, in many ways we have, but just realizing that a year ago and we have not really faced or dealt with the many killings that have happened since, since then of unarmed black men and women in our communities by, by state forces. So it, like I said, I think, you know, I think probably 100 years ago, they probably would look at us now and notice a few things have changed, but they probably also look at us and notice a lot of things haven't. So I just want to take some space and recognize that and, and just, just make sure that we, we don't, we don't forget the palpable impact of that event last year and, and maybe it can be a, a catalyzing point to, to really move forward in, in facing these issues head on and not, not bureaucratizing our way out of them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. And that brings us to Ward Seven, so I do have a couple of things. First, I just wanted to let you all know about a delightful young lady I met yesterday. She's 94 years young and her name is Ruby Tolliver and she's a resident of Ward Seven. A dear friend of hers asked if I would just come and, and sit with her for a couple minutes and talk to her. And towards the end of our conversation, we actually started listening to her stories about Deep Deuce and it was phenomenal to hear her connections and the places where she worked, how she met her first husband, him being a barber and working down the street on Second Street and the things that she experienced and, and also she is the widow of Mr. Tolliver, who worked for our city for many years. And also he worked in the city manager's office. So it was great to make that type of connection with, with this young lady and to just hear her words about just her experience. And again, because me growing up, that's not a place that I knew about as far as Deep Deuce is concerned, just those integrated stories. So to be able to hear something like that was, was pretty amazing and, and actually made my Monday, I must say. I also want to thank Science Museum Oklahoma. Last week they had Citizen Science Civics and Resilient Communities and they talked about drought resiliency. And we had from our water conservation department, our specialist Mallory Gotcher, she spoke on behalf of the city and the things that we, we do and even talked about the rain barrels. And I know we've exceeded some expectations when it comes to our water conservation with the rain barrels for our city. So I think those types of connections are very important for us as we talk about just this rainy, a couple of weeks we've had that have been dreary, but clearly it's good as we are transitioning into a warm summer that I believe we can all anticipate on, on the edge of, of this experience for this very mild spring that we've had thus far. Also, last week at the Marriott Gardens in that area, got to hear from author Rilla Askew and she was amazing. She's a professor at OU and she has a book called Fire in Beulah that she released pertaining to the Tulsa Race Massacre. It's a, it's a fiction book and it pertains to an experience from a white perspective and an African American perspective and, and blending those thoughts of what took place together and, and what happened. And a couple, I'll probably be talking a little around a couple of things because I have quite a few notes here and I'll be done. I want to also thank our Public Works Department and Mr. Winger for his leadership with our communication, constant communication with the City of Jones for their Midwest Boulevard in Britton area. We had some difficulties there, so they were down for a couple of weeks, but they are up and running. So I do want to thank and our city manager as well for continuing to connect us in the conversations and the expectation for them to get back up and running as soon as we could get them back up and running. I talked about Dead Center Film, so again, that film is Summer of Soul and it's a documentary by Questlove of the Roots. He's introducing this documentary and this is about a six-week Harlem Cultural Festival that will be in this documentary. So it's, it's being brought down and you can see performances by Stevie Wonder, Sliding the Family Stone, Gladys Knight in the Pips. So I know Mr. Stone, Stone Cypher, that's bringing up some memories for you. So I can't wait till we get our chairs and sit together and watch this. I can't wait. And BB King, just to name a few of those who will be a, a part of this particular documentary. So I can just say, just, just be ready. Make sure you get your tickets with Dead Center for that. Actually, it's free, so we just want you to come and enjoy the area for that. I also wanted to make sure we continue to acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month. While it is almost over, are still things and ways for us to cope with mental health. And I think we can all say, mental health has truly been a factor over this past year, over this past year and continuing to guide us as far as how, how we work through a lot of our mental health concerns and addressing those and just making sure we're being well, safe and well for ourselves as well as our neighbors. And we also have a conversation with Mr. Cornell West that's coming up this Thursday. Want to make sure I mention that. And that was at the behest of Councilwoman Hammond and we worked together to see how we could bring this to different parts of our community, talking about the symposium, the John Hope Franklin Symposium for Reconciliation. And this is going to have Thursday, six and there's, we'll make sure we, we get that posted as far as how folks can join as well. So, oh, my Vice Mayor duties, my first Vice Mayor duty, let me talk about that. It was for Tiff's Treats. If y'all have received the cookies there yet, I don't know if you have, but they deliver warm cookies and they have delivered, before they even opened, over 400,000 cookies across the metro to people. So the goal is for them to deliver warm cookies. We've had them in this office. For those who missed out, I'm sorry, they were really good. But please make sure you go out and you patron Tiff's Treats, who is a concept out of Texas and now they are here and our city has welcomed them with open arms and they are grateful and excited to be in our community. So they're located in Bricktown. So if you get a chance, and I'm actually glad this was my first Vice Mayor duty because I got some free cookies too and got to experience warm, just the warm goodness of, of what they are bringing and have brought to our city. Another thing I wanted to mention is Wings Special Needs Community. We voted on this probably within the last month or so for them to relocate and build their community in, in our, in Ward Seven. And on Sunday, they had a, a reveal, property reveal and a ceremony for the residents that will be a part of this. And we're excited about bringing special needs communities into the fold of our conversations within Ward Seven. And if you are not familiar with Wings, I would And if you are not familiar with Wings, I would ask and encourage you all to do so. Volunteers are needed. And I'm thinking probably, hopefully within this time next year or before year's end of 2022, they'll be opening their doors and, and we'll be able to, to see the great work that they are doing. And currently they are located in Edmond. Shout out to our 2021 graduates. We have quite a few. And I have been asked to be a commencement speaker for FD Moon Middle School this evening. So I'm excited to speak to some eighth graders who are probably just ready to go to high school. They don't even want to hear what I have to say, but I'm going to tell them a few words anyway. So we'll see what happens with that. Please wish me luck. And, oh, June 5th. So we decided as of Wednesday last week to postpone the, the job and resource fair for our community that was to take place at Douglas for June 5th. And I just want y'all to know, don't, don't, don't underestimate what this weather can do in Oklahoma because we assumed some weather was going to take place in shape while it was dreary. Now I didn't see a drop of rain. It was 80% by Wednesday and by Saturday, nothing. So we'll try to get on June 5th and see what happens. Please join us. And as you heard, Councilwoman Young say, we do need lifeguards, especially in our community. So if we can help in that effort, we want you to please get our young people employed $10 an hour. Now, if I was 16, $10 an hour, all summer I'd be at the pool trying to get this job, all summer, all summer long. So I'll leave with a couple of things, my thoughts as far as the Tulsa Race Massacre. I know our city, a lot of folks are asking what we're doing. And in my opinion, I believe it's important for us to hold space for Tulsa, not have activities because we want to hold space for, for Tulsa and, and what took place and how we acknowledge. And I'm sure some of you may have or may not seen the young lady, 107 years young on Capitol Hill, testifying about the things she still experiences at the age of 107, remembering the bodies, remembering the booms, remembering the fires, remembering the screams. She still has those thoughts 107 years later. So let that just sink in for something that happened 100 years ago for this woman and, and her experiences of, of what she has gone through. And also, I've received some correspondence, I guess, pertaining to what are just thoughts about the massacre and the fact remains, while some people want to put a number on how many people have possibly died in that tragedy, we don't know. And they don't have names. That's the most unfortunate part about this. A lot of these people do not have names. We'll just find pieces of them without them having the proper burial. So those efforts are what's happening and what's going on. So with that as well, the conversation now adds to the George Floyd anniversary. And there's an article in the paper today asking what has changed in Oklahoma City a year later. So I can answer that now. Not much, not much. Last year this time at council meeting, I was talking about what happened to Travis Miller in a community that's in Ward seven as a truck driver who was not allowed to leave because of the color of his skin. He was a delivery driver. And the owner, one of the owners of, of one of those residents, who was also, I guess, the president of the Neighborhood Association, grilled him and would not let him leave. So as I was talking about that, this time last year, a George Floyd was taking place. A George Floyd took place. And here we are, still wondering what has changed. Some things that have changed are legislation now that you can't tell the story. Legislation now pertaining to those who went to the streets. Legislation now pertaining to how we all hold people accountable for actions on black and brown bodies. And it's not in support of those black and brown bodies either. So we have a lot of work to do. While I'm thankful we have a law enforcement task force, I do hope, and I, I say that very gracefully, I do hope that we are able to come to a consensus where we can all work together for common good pertaining to our communities and how we are represented and how we represent each other. And again, as you've heard, the fact that we are still working through the process of many others being killed since our conversations last year. So how many more is the question? How many more? And to add to the list of names that was, as we heard Reverend Valerie Steele say so eloquently, Miss Starshells, 28 years young, a mother who had just dropped off her kids at daycare. Her kids expected to see her yesterday. She expected to see them yesterday, but she didn't because of someone who decided to take a truck. And a chase began and many cars behind him in that chase, which ultimately ended this young woman's fate. So I hold space for her today. I hold space for her family today, and I hope you will join me in doing the same. Thank you. Ward eight, Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate your comments. One thing I want to tell you, in my youth, Sly and the Family Stone, they were one of my favorite bands. And so I look forward to the Dead Center Film Festival, June 12th, 2021 event. The other thing, I have a question for you, Vice Mayor. Do you know what's going to happen 14 days from today that's historic in Oklahoma City?
I know. See, you and I like to get each other with history back. So go ahead and hit me.
Okay, James, do you know what's going to happen historic 14 days from today?
I don't, but I do know that if I find out that you showed up at that Dead Center Festival with the folding chair next to Vice Mayor Nice without having me next to you, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be some kind of mad, but please continue.
Yeah, 14 days from today, June 8th, we return to the horseshoe. And I am so excited about getting back to the horseshoe. And I want all our viewers to know that we're going to be back on, at City Hall. While through this pandemic, we've been able to govern, it's been really difficult on many of the council. And just for example, today, I have four committee and, and trust meetings. The first one beginning at one, the last one ending at, or beginning at four. And with this pandemic mode in which we've operated in Zoom and Prime Gov, it's been difficult to make some of those meetings. And so I look forward to the interaction. For example, today I'll be able to go to Riverfront River Development Authority and meet with Gary Mars and others. And so I'm excited to return back to City Hall to interact with staff, to interact with council, and most importantly, to interact with our citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we're all excited about that, to just have that human interaction with each other. Now we'll move on to item 12, City Manager Reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We don't have any formal reports. I just wanted to mention a couple of things on two of the reports. We do have three reports on, but no formal presentations. The first one I wanted to mention is the interim financial report, and this is through March 31st. Very strong report, revenues well above target and expenditures below target, actually. So really good position for us. The numbers show if you just compare revenues to expenditures, there's about a $51 million difference there between how much we have in revenues and how much we've got in actual expenditures so far. That will begin to adjust. The revenues and expenditures don't time themselves exactly through the year. And so we'll have more expenditures coming at the end of the year that will offset some of that. We're about $21.6 million above our revenue targets right now. And that was primarily sales and use tax, as we've heard, and we'll hear about another sales tax report here in a minute. And then the expenditures are about $13.7 million below target right now. And so between the two of those, about a $30 million between where we expected to be and where we, where we are right now. And so a really positive report there. The budget amendment will help us take advantage of the growth that we've seen in revenue and be able to address some, some very important issues. So really appreciate the introduction there on that budget amendment today. Also want to mention the May sales tax check. We'd sent information to council previously about this, but May sales tax check was the largest check actually that we've received in our history. And just looking, the report that we have in here today focuses on the general fund. The general fund sales tax was about $2 million higher than what we've ever received before. So significant growth there. The percentage growth was like 38% growth. And part of that was expected just because we had such a decline last year, particularly May and June. Were hard hit with the effects of the pandemic and as we closed down on the economy and just everyone locked down there for a while. So we expected that, but we also had pent-up demand from the ice storm back in March that had some effect there that we think, you know, came over into this, this check that we're receiving in May. And, and then also some assistance going out from the federal government, additional assistance going out from the federal government also contributed. So it's a lot of factors coming together. We don't think this will be a long-term trend. We do expect the June's check to be another really strong check, just because June was, June was down so far last year. So the growth, you'll see really strong double-digit growth again. We're hopeful to have a good check there. Finish out the year strong. We aren't expecting any long-term trend like this, but it's really great news to hear for us and puts us in a good position. Like I said before, with the budget amendment, to deal with some important issues for the city. So just wanted to give you an update on that. We'll continue to monitor and report to the council regularly on the sales tax. And that's all that I have, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I think it's very important to point out the 54% of, of the sales tax performance right now has been retail. So it means that we are spending locally. So that's a great thing for us to recognize and acknowledge for, especially I'm hoping that it's a lot of our small businesses that are here in the metro. So thank you for that report. All right. On, on my end, I have an item 13, Citizens to be Heard. And I believe we have one person that signed up to speak.
Vice Mayor, it doesn't appear that they're on the line.
Okay.
Anthony Waller signed up, but he's not on.
Okay. With, with that, we will move on to item 14. So that means we are here now adjourned.